Hey Amy. Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I am pretty good.
All right. Door, correct? Uh, the timer. The timer she has set up.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Got my notebook, taking all these notes and those little tiny pieces of paper from the meeting.
How are you, Sabrina?
Good morning, Keith. How are you?
I'm well.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, so I like hold her, but I can tell you by now it's the same.
Hi, Paris. How are you?
Hi, Markeith. I'm good. How are you doing?
Great.
Good to see you. I'm trying to, I'm gonna, I should have did this earlier. I'm trying to look for a picture to, this is a background.
So.
People seeing my curtains.
Howdy, hi, how?
How are you doing there?
Yeah, how, hey.
You need to send me that background picture you have. I'm trying to, I'm sick of looking at my curtains.
I'll try and ship it to you. It's, I forget who took it, but I like it. But I gotta do something else for summer, but I do have a winter one with snow that gets old too.
Ooh, that's an idea. I'll find something, I'll find something springy.
There you go. And when I first started off, I had the Bowlin Creek Greenway behind me, and people thought I was sitting outside. They're like, how's it not dark where you are? Oh, that's when Zoom was first out.
I'm magic. I got magic.
You don't want to see my messies so far behind me. It's full of papers and books and scars and, oh, I don't even want to look at it either.
I need, I need to come and raid your scar collection. I'm sure you got some good ones.
Beautiful scar they got on. Mine are to hide those.
Hey, Michael.
Looks like I should be wearing a scarf.
I'm looking for the bow tie. You slipping?
Not tonight.
No? Okay. Not tonight.
Never, I never wear ties to work sessions.
Oh. This work session casual.
That's right.
Yeah, he dresses down for work session.
Okay, I gotta shop for a picture. Hold on.
How are you, MJ?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Thank you, Mike. Sounds good.
Great. Thanks.
You sound like.
It doesn't sound like me, but I've got it on.
Four minutes.
You're fine. I got it.
How are you, Ty? Your name?
Doing great.
Hey, your microphone sounds.
I found one I like.
Look at her with the, what are those, dogwoods?
Yeah.
One of the two or three trees I can actually recognize.
Okay, that's cherry blossom tree.
You see, I can't recognize.
Oh, it is cherry blossom. It does, it does look like dog looks, but it is cherry blossom. Sorry. You were wrong, Michael.
It looks like one of Van Gogh's paintings as well. Of the cherry blossoms.
We're missing a few people. Hello, Jess.
If we don't have quorum, do we just not meet?
No, we get to meet anyway. Each one of us will have to take a partner to update since we don't vote.
Never mind.
Off you an extra two hours, so you know, now.
It's okay, we got quorum.
Yeah, we do, actually.
Barely. I mean, I can leave.
No, stay put, please. All right, Karen, Amy, Adam, Camille.
I have two minutes.
Good thing they don't gotta drive somewhere.
Maybe they think it's at seven.
Yeah, that happens from time to time. We can discuss that again, too. We've never gone back and had that discussion.
That was like 2015, right?
Yeah, then we, we actually re-verified keeping it that way in 2017, I think, so.
When we first, when, when we first, when I first started, when the three of us, just Pam and me, it was at six, right? And then we compromised on 6:30. Is that right? Am I memory correct?
Yes. Ooh, Karen, did you get a haircut?
I did. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, look, new summer suit.
Looks good.
Hello, Camille.
Hello, hello.
Hello, Adam. All right, so we're missing.
Hey, everyone. It feels so nice out.
Oh, it's gorgeous out. And the pollen's not so intense.
No.
A little breeze, you don't get the bugs. It's nice.
Can open the windows.
Ten seconds.
Michael, will you text Amy Ryan for me, please?
On the shoulder.
All right. Are we good? All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 11th work session of the Chapel Hill Town Council. We're glad to have you with us this evening, or whether you're here with us virtually, or you're watching online or gonna watch us later, we're happy to have your participation. There is a change to the agenda this evening. In order to have enough time to go over the recommendations from our lower Booker Creek work group, we have bumped that item to May 25th at this point. So look for that to be so, or it may be coming back a little later. We're working all the details out. So we'll just have three items on this evening. We'll start off with the manager's recommended budget, followed by the American Rescue Plan funding and the expedited affordable housing review process. So we always do welcome public comment, except this is a work session. So any public comment would be saved until the end. If we have time at the end to have some public comment. However, that's, there are many ways to talk and reach out to us, and we will be having a regular council meeting next Wednesday night, or you can email us or call, all those kinds of things. Before I get to the roll call, I wanted to share with you all that we learned that earlier the week, we learned that Miriam Thompson had passed away, and we want to send out our condolences to her family and her friends. She has been an incredible force for social, racial, and economic justice in our community for a very long time. She also brought a level of energy and conviction to his, to her work that is unsurpassed. And I've been thinking about how we might honor her tonight. And I don't think a moment of silence is appropriate because Miriam was never silent. She didn't believe in being silent. She believed in speaking up, showing up, standing up, and fighting for everyone to be treated with dignity and respect. And I, I will tell the story when I first came into office. I knew who Miriam was, but she came and talked to me before I even was sworn in about we needed to change our grievance policy system. Of course, I knew nothing about that system, and I was like, tell me more. And she did. And the minute we were done with that process, she started right into the next one. And so we used her as a barometer to find out, you know, how messages were resonating in the community. And she just really was a good, community spirited person. So I'd like to suggest that we all clap and say, Miriam, you'll be missed. So who joined me in clapping? A job well done, Miriam. I love the heart, Paris. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on to our roll call vote. As part of our virtual meeting rules, just unmute yourself and say, I are present, but Mayor Pretend Segman.
Hi.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Barry.
Hi.
Councilmember Lynn.
Hi.
Councilmember Miller Fruzy.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sering.
Here.
And the mayor is also here, so thank you for that. We do have a few announcements to hang in there. There's going to be a public information meeting on the police station property on this coming Monday at 6:00 PM. Town staff and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality will hold a public information webinar that will be virtually to discuss the status of the police station property and provide information about the ground fields program. And so you can find the, how to sign up on the town website. We welcome you to attend. We'll have a regular council meeting on May 18th. We will be opening the public hearing on the budget and considering several land use applications, including the apartments at 101 East Rosemary Street downtown, a permit for the Fifth Thirds Bank at the Hardee's site, and to propose changes to the Gimbal Castle property. I sent out a message at, earlier asking council members to respond. I will share with you that we did have an EOC meeting to talk about the COVID numbers and where we were. As of now, the COVID numbers have been rising again, but the hospitalizations have not, which is a good thing, except for they think the level, number of cases being reported is underrated because so many people are doing home tests. So I did reach out to all of you to see if you wish to stay virtual, or you want to come back in person next week. I haven't heard back from all of you. I've got some. Anyway, if you please respond, then I can talk with the manager about what the decision is. If, if we voted to stay virtual for the meeting next week, we wouldn't come back into play until June 8th. And I will share with you that UNC Health, I'm trying to think, he's the virologist, they are calling this another wave right now. There's just, it's so contagious at the moment, but again, we're still encouraging people to get vaccinated and boosted. It is keeping people out of the hospital system. We also had some more reported deaths. It didn't really mean that we actually had more deaths. They just changed the reporting system, but it added some numbers, and that was, that was sad to hear, so. And we are having our legislative breakfast next week, Thursday morning at the library with our state legislators. Again, stay tuned. We should be in person for that. It will be at the library. We'll send out more information and the agenda to talk with our legislators. Election Day is the 17th, so this will be two days after Election Day. So there may be some, we've invited everybody, so let's see. And I believe Bimla is catering, so please come hungry because it's usually a good deal. All right. Were there any other announcements that need to be shared right now? Okay, I'll remind you, this is a work session. We use first names usually, try to be a little more informal as we move through this. But Maurice says a budget prepared, and he made some changes and sent it out. I just had a chance to look at it, so we'll probably be all focused up at the screen while you're sharing the new budget presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm Reese Jones, the town manager, and I'm pleased to be with you this evening to continue our discussion of the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 23. Amy Owen, our director of business management, is also here for the discussion this evening. As you know, we began this discussion with you all back in February. Our team has been working hard at this since the fall of last year, preparing this document for your consideration and ultimately for your approval in June. The total proposed budget for next year is $128 million. That's for all of our funds, with the general fund accounting for roughly $76.5 million. That's an 8.9% increase from the current fiscal year. The proposed property tax rate for next year is 51.9 cents. Our current property tax rate is 51.4 cents. That half cent difference is being proposed to go to the transit fund to help them increase, to help them address an increase in operational and capital costs. We are proposing a tiered of market pay increase for our employees this year in an effort to continue to address our compression issues. We are proposing a 4% increase for our employees who've been with us for less than five years and a 5% increase for our employees who've been with us for five or more years. That is a total of $1.9 million on the general fund. And we believe this budget offers several new investments in council priorities that we'll talk about in a few minutes. Here's a quick breakdown of the general fund budget on the revenue side. You can see that property taxes account for 47% of our revenue, followed by sales tax, state shared funding, charges for services and licenses and permits. Our total general fund budget is proposed to be $76.5 million. So here are a few of the new investments in the recommended budget that was presented last week. The aforementioned pay adjustment for our employees, a reserve fund to help address compression issues within the organization. We have four new positions that are included in this proposed budget, a grants administrator position at $121,000. That's for both pay and for benefits. That's, and, and other operating costs associated with it. A new position in our DEI office that would equate to about $100,000 in a new, in new investment. A new planning technician position to help in the planning department as they address a significant workload that they are facing. That's about $76,000. And then we, I've offered to hire a compensation analyst in human resources to help manage our compensation efforts as we move forward. This is, is allocated for half a year because we don't anticipate hiring for this position until January of next year. We have, we have an additional $80,000. Excuse me. We have an additional $80,000 in for our climate action. That's in addition to the $470,000 that we currently have in this year's budget. We have another $80,000 to add to our annual allocation for affordable housing issues. We've offered a 3% escalator for our funding for human services agencies. We have an extra $100,000 to assist with the downtown partnerships efforts to improve the look and feel of our downtown. We're also offering $125,000 in new funding to address bike and safety, bike and pedestrian safety issues, including our Vision Zero initiative. Another $20,000 for the cultural arts, $50,000 for parks maintenance, $95,000 for annual vehicle replacement, $200,000 to address the increase we're experiencing throughout the organization for the cost of doing business. And we have nearly $100,000 to ensure we have the proper security protection that we need in this increasingly dangerous cyber world that we live in. We have heard that council is interested in moving an economic development position to this new baseline budget. The total cost for that position is $81,000. If council is interested in moving forward with that, we could add that position by reducing the cost of services. Number that we put out there by about $50,000 and reducing the compression reserve allocation that we've set up. You see those two numbers on the, on your screen there that would help pay for the economic development position, if that's the direction that council wants to go in. I also wanted to bring to your attention several other sizable requests that have come in recently over the course of the last couple of months. IFC has asked the regional localities to consider entering into an interlocal agreement to provide a total of $650,000 in new funding. We have not had that discussion just yet with council about whether we are interested in, in entering into an interlocal agreement, and neither have the other boards just yet. We hope to try to take up that issue with council soon so that we have some general direction. We won't have an interlocal agreement, obviously, done by the end of the council season in June. But if we have direction from council on what steps to take next, then we, we can try to take up that issue over the summer and come back to you with an agreement later on this fall, if that's where council decides to go.
Maurice, are these numbers for the total, or this would be the?
Yeah, it's a total. We noted that on the screen. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. It's a total of $650,000 that would be split up amongst the localities, I believe.
Got it. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No worries, no worries. We've received word that the partnership to end homelessness is requesting an additional $273,000 from the town. There are other asks that are out there for other localities, but 273 from the town to address some of their needs. And last week, the Visitors Bureau reminded us of a formula that's been used in the past to increase the bureau's funding when they've reached a certain threshold in the receipt of occupancy taxes. And that would mean an additional $75,000 for the bureau next year if we decide to move forward with, with, with offering that up. It's not been something that we've had in the last couple of budgets because of the occupancy tax, the drop in the occupancy tax during the pandemic, but we do anticipate it increasing for next year. And that's certainly something that we should take into consideration with the council. So we'll take a quick look now at our enterprise funds, transit. The transit fund would receive a 13% increase in this budget. Housing, an 11% increase. Parking, you see there's a significant increase in there. That's because of the, the inclusion now of the, of the East Rosemary Street parking deck, which is under construction right now, and we anticipate being operational next fiscal year. And the store martyr fund will remain the same as the current fiscal year. Several council, council members have expressed an interest in what an additional penny on the tax rate would mean for our investments. You can see the, the list there that we presented last week is just options. If council wanted to go in that direction, some of the things that you could fund that we've identified as needs within our organization have been identified needs by council and our community as well. So a penny would equate to roughly $958,000 in new revenue. We've got a, a couple of items on there that would, that could be funded with this additional funding for climate change, affordable housing and homelessness issues, bike and pedestrian improvements, and also could increase funding for the cultural arts. So questions that we have for council as we move forward, and not all these questions need to be answered tonight, but it would help us in terms of next steps that we would take. Does council support the highlighted priorities for, for our new funding that we presented to you, generally speaking? Is council supportive of adding the economic development position to the baseline budget? Are you comfortable with where we've made cuts to balance out that new funding for that position? Where should we increase or decrease funding elsewhere? And is council supportive of the half cent increase in the tax rate for transit? So those are just some of the questions that we identified. I'm sure there will be others that may come up and other thoughts as we move forward. So we are having our budget work session this evening. Next steps in our budget process, we'll have a budget public hearing next Wednesday, followed by another work session on the 25th. We believe that we will need that work session on June 1st, but we'll see how things go on the 25th. And then we will look to adopt the budget, have the council adopt a budget on June 8th. And as always, we can find everything you need to know about our budget at our budget website, townofchapelhill.org/budget. With that, we will stop sharing the screen and begin the discussion with council about where you'd like to. With that, we will stop sharing the screen and begin the discussion with council about where you'd like to take this budget next.
So I want to see if I can knock out one of the questions before everybody just starts speaking.
Absolutely.
If the council's supportive of the economic development new position, could you give a thumbs up, please? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, that's a majority. Just wanted to see if you were supportive of that, just because that was one of the questions. And then we can let you discuss whether you feel comfortable with where the manager has made a recommendation to cut in order to do that. Just wanted to see if we were headed down that path before we got into a broader discussion. I did, Maurice, you and I had talked about the partnership to end homelessness and wanted to ask Jess, our representative, have they brought this request to the executive board yet? For what they want to do. So Maurice, you want to explain a little bit about what that request is about?
Yeah, it's primarily focused on increasing a number of positions within the partnership to assist with various efforts to, to provide rapid rehousing to folks who are living on the streets and are struggling with finding shelter. There's a segment of that that would go towards helping to pay for temporary shelters for, for folks, hotels, that type of thing in a pinch. But the bulk of the funding that I've seen so far would go towards hiring new positions to provide assistance to folks as they're trying to, to find them sheltered.
And Jess, when's your next meeting to discuss it before? Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. It's just that we're, we're trying to discern. This just came through recently. We're trying to discern. If, first it came through with a bigger number, then they came back with what they propose our share to be, but we didn't know if the executive board at the partnership and homelessness had even discussed the proposal. It came from the manager's office.
And isn't Serrad included in that as well?
Serrad is included in that as well.
Yeah.
We, our next meeting is, it looks like May sixteenth.
Okay, so you'll have information for us, hopefully to understand this better because, okay. And I'm trying to think, the IFC, we need to go through the discussions, but just so you know, the, the leaders had the discussion over, well, before COVID hit about figuring out a better pathway to help the IFC go through instead of having to go through the Human Services Advisory Board application process every year to be able to have this interlocal agreement because we all count on their services and they do an incredible job in our community, which a lot of nonprofits do. In this case, as we're trying to work on these initiatives with housing, affordable housing and partnership and homelessness and all the things involved, we want to figure a better process out. So look for that to come through the system as well. All right. Does anyone want to ask clarifying questions first and then how do you give opinions later? So clarifying questions first. Let's see, Michael, then Jess, then Karen, then Ty, and we'll get to everybody. So just go ahead.
Yeah. I think this is, this is a clarifying question if I'm, if it's not stopped me, but when you talk about funding the economic development proposal, you're talking about taking forty thousand, I believe, at a cost of services or whatever, roughly, you know, forty-five each out of cost of services and the comp and class reserve. And you've been, you know, Maurice, really strong in pushing to make sure that we take care of staff and that we do all these things. So if you could explain your thinking, number one, and then number two, the way you presented it, or way I thought you presented it a couple of meetings ago that, you know, the increased cost of, I think it was various contracts. It sounded like it wasn't optional, that these were contracts that had to be paid for. So I'm just trying, I'm struggling with understanding why you now feel you can take money out of those two lines.
Well, so a couple of reasons. One, when we went back and looked at the, the budget, we felt that we could probably with the, with actually both the compression and with the cost of services, we could probably use excess fund balance to help pay for, for those if they go beyond that one hundred and fifty that we're talking about now for, for one, and then I guess the other one, yeah, they're both about a hundred and fifty or so thousand dollars that we could use excess fund balance to help cover those costs if we needed to for next year. And so that's, that's the reason why council has had an interest in it. We felt that was the most logical place to reduce some of that funding.
Why then not just, if you feel comfortable using excess fund balance, why not use excess fund balance to pay for the economic development position?
Well, because I, I think because it's a, it's an ongoing position that we felt uncomfortable, you know, putting eighty-one thousand dollars towards and then, you know, making that commitment without you know, knowing what, what we would have to do in the future to fund that. Whereas I think we've got a little more wiggle room with the compression issues and with the cost of services.
Thank you.
Does that help?
All right, Jess, then Karen, then Ty.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, the first was on the topic that Michael just brought up. I'm just wondering beyond how those, how those two, the compression and the cost of services, beyond how they'll be covered, I'm just wondering, were there other ways of funding the economic development position that you looked at? Like, are there other options? Or are those two line items the only way to accomplish it?
No, it's not the only way. I mean, council, we could, we could reduce in other areas if we wanted to. It just, we felt that those were, as we were looking at that, that list of, of new investments, we felt that those gave us a little more flexibility to, to do that.
Okay. Yeah. Well, yes, I know we could take from other places. I'm just wondering if there were other places that you felt were, yeah, I'm not really asking the question in a coherent way. Sorry.
I understand.
Um, yeah, I'm just wondering, was there another way to accomplish that that seems also reasonable? Or is this really what you feel is the best way to do it?
I, I think once again, I think we feel this is the best way of addressing that without taking some funding from other areas that, that we felt need to be funded for next year.
Okay, that's fair. I was just wondering if you were like, wait, you know, looking at anything else that seemed viable. And then generally, are there any kind of, I, I haven't been able to read all the stuff that came in today, so sorry if this is in there, but are there places where cuts have been made that to, you know, across the board that, that we should know about or just that you would want to highlight for us?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. I can, Amy and I can take a look at it, but not that I can think of.
We have not made any cuts.
Yeah, no significant cuts.
Okay. Um, all right. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
True.
Karen, then Ty.
Yeah, thanks. I have a couple of questions. First is about the outreach, I don't remember, the sustainability outreach, the new position that would be under John Richardson. I know there's two proposed. And I wasn't, I hadn't really heard about that second one, the educator outreach. Could you talk about the role?
There actually aren't two new positions being proposed. We currently have two positions in our sustainability office, and one of those positions was funded in this current fiscal year. And then the, the new position is the outreach position that would assist with outreach into the community and with our nonprofits when it comes to, to climate change and our efforts to, to implement the plan that the council proposed or the council approved. So it's not, it's not two new positions, it's just the one.
Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying that. And is that a, did John request it or how, where did that need come from?
Yeah, and it was identified as a need when we first began our discussions over the climate action, the common action plan and moving forward with that, that was one of the positions that we had talked about.
Okay. Um, and I have a couple of questions about the downtown partnership. One, the, I don't know her title, and I know she's now left it, but the Eleanor Landis position, is that fully funded by UNC or do we contribute as well?
I believe we contribute to it, but we can confirm that for you.
Um, I would be interested in knowing that, while we're kind of looking closely at how to maximize the, the funds we're giving to the downtown partnership to support our, our goals. I would be interested in knowing about that. And I'm going to ask a question that I'm sure is not at all popular, but I'm going to ask it anyway. A chunk of the funds we give to downtown partnership goes to launch. How is that achieving our town goals?
Well, I'd love, we'd probably like to bring, you know, Dwight Bassidore, folks from Launch, talk to you in detail about it, but I think in the long term, what it's doing is assisting with the development of economic, its economic development opportunities in our, in our community by helping to create new businesses and support new businesses as they're starting here in Chapel Hill. And that's one of the reasons that we I was going to say launched, launch in the first place, was to, to, to help create that, that ecosystem to, to develop those businesses. And another important step that we've talked to council about in the past is how do we not only create those businesses or assist in the creation and the growth of those businesses, but then find them homes here in Chapel Hill so they're not moving off to places like Durham and elsewhere. And so launch is an important part of that process, I believe.
Yeah, no, I get, I, I understand that in theory. It doesn't seem like we've been able to keep businesses so far, and I know that's part of our economic development plan and investments is that we will have spaces and ways to keep them, but it, yeah, from what, and I certainly am not advocating just cut, launch off cold, but I do think, you know, there's a conversation to be had there to make sure our investments are, are working the way we want and, you know, whether there's other alternatives for, for funding there.
Karen, can I, yeah, back off that? We can send you the report from Launch. It actually has retained businesses and Dwight's work is actually, there's so many more that have stayed. And I'll be honest with you, they stayed in Orange County, not just Chapel Hill, because we look at it that way with UNC. We can send you that report, but since you're in that category, I'm, my question was going to be, it's time to unhook the one forty Wes dues out of the MSC district tax. That, and it's a quite equivalent to what we're actually asking to add back to the downtown partnership. So I think we could clean that item up. And I asked them to break that out for you guys to see. Whether you, launch discussion or not, that one just doesn't make sense. It's never made sense to me that that, because one forty West pays property taxes and that's where those dues, I mean, they're going to the general fund. But anyway, I will get the launch report. I don't know if this year's been done, but we can get that sent to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
And it's a great, Mayor Protam, it's a great reminder that we haven't, we haven't had an update on launch in a while for the council, and it's something we probably should do in the future.
One of your colleagues is from Launch and stayed in Chapel Hill.
Well, I was just about to say that. They pump out a council member every once in a while.
That's worth all the money in the world. One more question, just in terms of, I know the IFC's ask is big, and that's not something we can figure out tonight. And I would imagine it's not something we can meet all at one, all even in one year. But in terms of, so I understand we need to have more conversation about it, but are, how do we depending on what council decides, how do we kind of hold funding for, for them, at least some portion? Or how, how are we going to go about that?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, one of the things that, one of the reasons we proposed a hundred thousand or eighty thousand dollars in the baseline budget, we can increase that if, if council's interested for affordable housing and homelessness, is we knew that there, you know, we had these requests out there. And so we could say, we're just going to, we're going to reserve that for, you know, further discussion or whatever number that the council lands on, we, we could say we're going to reserve that for further discussion with IFC and/or the partnership to see how we could phase in what they're asking for over a period of time. So it's not, you know, five hundred thousand dollars or so, or four hundred thousand dollars in your wallet for us. And I would imagine the other localities that are our partners on these types of issues would, would agree with that approach as well. But that may be, was a step we could take is just put some money aside saying, hey, listen, we're, we're not going to get an agreement done in the next month, but hopefully by the fall, we would be in a position to have a better understanding of what that would do. We can also engage with those organizations with IFC and with the partnership and ask them a little bit about, well, what is a base, what would a phased approach look like to you? And we can bring that to council.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. Okay, sorry, hang on. Ty, then I had Adams and Amy.
Thank you. I had two quick questions. One, I am supportive of the economic development position, but just wanted to hear a little more from you, or I guess Dwight is not on the call, about kind of what we had in mind for that position to do. I know we have a lot of economic development projects on the horizon.
I, I think like, like the, the two positions that we have in economic development is kind of a jack of all trades type position, right? That they would spend some time providing some technical support and administrative support for both Dwight and Laura, but then also would get their feet wet with working on projects and that type of thing as well. So I think it would be a hodgepodge of responsibilities that they would have to kind of spread out some of the responsibilities that are currently being carried by both Laura and Dwight.
Gotcha. And so a quick follow-up on that. With expanding the capacity within the department, has there been any thought given to a model where we kind of more specialize each person's role within the department?
I mean, i- if we had more positions, I think it would be easier to do that. But it's certainly something that we can talk about, you know, is there more of an opportunity with three positions now versus the two? You know, I was talking, the mayor and I were talking about this the other day. When I came aboard, we had one position and Laura was that, was kind of a half position. And she provided assistance to both the manager's office and to economic development and then morphed into the position that she's in now. So I'm not sure if we could specialize or not. I'd have to talk to Dwight about that and, and see if we have enough people to do that, right? To, to break up those responsibilities, but.
And, sorry, another question. I thought the new parking person we hired was also considered a higher in economic development. So wouldn't that mean we have three currently and we're adding a fourth?
Which parking position? I'm not.
Parking services manager.
Michael Carew.
Yeah, that's in parking.
That's in the parking fund, but we already had that position. He's been with us for a while now.
Gotcha. And then the other question I had was where are we at on the transit fund? I know the partner's requested to be at that eight tenths of a cent level. And where we were at with that, I didn't see that in the new presentation.
Well, we have the, the point five, so council needs to have a discussion as to whether or not they're willing to, to go up to, to a higher number in order to meet some of the needs within transit.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Adams and Amy, and then?
Yeah, I had a few questions. So the first one is just, I just, with the IFC discussion. So is that six hundred and fifty thousand new funding on top of what we would usually contribute or is that?
I believe so. I'll, I'll double check on that, but I believe it's new funding.
Yeah. I mean, we just need, I mean, there's a great need out there, but we also need more information. I think it's, I mean, that would be like a probably, I mean, I don't know exactly what their budget is, but it's probably like a twenty-five or thirty percent increase in their overall budget from all the, you know, so that's a big, big change. So I just need more information, you know, as we go forward. Um, second question, the, you know, we have a line item in here for our own council stipends, so our increasing our stipends and pay, and I'm just trying to get a handle on how that divides out. If you just divide that forty thousand by nine, that's four thousand and change. You know, increase in each member with about twenty-seven percent increase. Is that what you're, you know, I mean, or are you just?
I mean, that's, you're right, roughly, that's what it equates to. We have not had that discussion with the council. We still need to, to, to have that separately, but we wanted to make sure, because there was interest in increasing the stipend, to put a dollar amount in there to, to try to be responsive to council's interest. And then council can take up that issue.
And then the seventy-five thousand we're putting in our priorities for the bike and pedestrian going forward. Could you just, you know, what would that, I mean, what are we talking about paying for? You know, what would that get us, I guess?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I can probably, I'll, I'll give it, give you a best guess on that based on some of the conversations that we've had, but those would be the types of things that we've talked about and have implemented over at ST's Drive in the last five or six months. So you have some traffic notification, or sorry, pedestrian notification signals, those types of things. And it just gives them a little more money on an annual basis to be responsive to those needs as they pop up throughout the, the, the town.
So it's just more recurring to, so that we can do more of the?
Absolutely.
Traffic and all that stuff like that. Okay. And then my final question is that, you know, we're talking about the half cent tax increase. about the half cent tax increase for transit. So that's about what, 470 some thousand or whatever, I guess, in new revenue that we'd bring in. And you said it was, it's for divide between depth service and personnel. Can, so can you just?
Well, it's operational cost. I mean, it's primarily in the operational side, because we're seeing, you know, increases there that we're trying to address. And then there has been discussions about possibly purchasing additional buses as well. And so helping to pay for that would be part of that, part of that increase.
But the personnel item would be, we need more, it's, is it pay or personnel or more positions? I mean, what's the?
It's not more positions. It's to, to help pay for some of the operational costs. It could include pay and then other increases in their operational costs.
Okay. Thank you.
The price of diesel has gone up by a factor of about three. It's almost $5 a gallon now, and we were paying about a buck eighty.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And we just locked in at a price that will help smooth some of that out for us over the course of the next year, year and a half, I think. So thankfully, we, we got a pretty good offer that we jumped, jumped on, because we don't think diesel prices are going to go down anytime soon.
I've got Amy and then Camille and then Paris.
Yeah, thank you. Maurice, I had a question about the, the way that the climate positions are funded. They're listed in the manager's office, but there's an asterisk that they're funded. So they're funded out of the climate fund, not out of the general fund? Or how, how does that all?
That's correct. Amy, Amy Oland, I don't know if you wanted to say anything more about that, but?
Well, that is correct. I mean, ultimately, the transfer, the funds that are going towards the Climate Action Fund are coming from the general fund. So you could look at it that way. But yes, the two positions, the two dedicated positions, so not John Richardson's position, but Brennan's position, and then the new one being posed, are being paid out of the 470,000 allocated for climate action.
Okay.
Eighty.
Plus the eighty.
Plus the eighty. And, and are there other positions that we fund in that way? I guess I, it should have occurred to me that if we're funding climate, of course, that a lot of that is staff and personnel time. But I also sort of had the feeling that I was approving a half million dollars that would go more directly to climate initiatives, not, not, we're going to personnel. So I'm glad, that was very good to clarify that. Are there other places where we do similar things like that? I mean, is there things in housing? Like when we have 688,000 for housing, is that going to only more, more programmatic things? Or is that also going to staff?
There's no, no staffing costs that are being paid out of the Affordable Housing Development Reserve.
Okay. So, so is that kind of unique to climate then, that we're doing it that way right now?
It's a little different in that, as Amy mentioned before, we're all, we're talking about general fund dollars for, for the climate, for climate action responses, whereas with the other funds, there are enterprise funds. And so it's just created a little differently and set up differently there.
Yeah, I guess, I guess for me, it's, it's less confusing if those would be counted as general funds and then my, the climate money was reduced. I get, I would have a better idea of what we had available programmatically for climate. So just as in terms of being able to look at it more clearly and see what we're doing, I think if, if that's our normal practice to do it, I, I'd.
Well, we could certainly, we, I'm sorry, we could certainly separate the two and show you the difference. You know, here are the two positions, the funding for the two positions, and here's what's left for, you know, operational costs and programmatic costs.
Yeah, that would, that would be great. Just as long as we have clarity on that, because I, I thought we actually had more program money than, than we do if we're paying for the positions there. And for the IFC money, is that going to be whatever our share might be? Would that be a, an ongoing expense? Would that be a one time?
As far as I know, it's an ongoing, it's an annual expense.
It would be annual ongoing. Okay. Because I was thinking if it was a one time, you know, we have a line item in your ARPA budget that we'll talk about next time. But okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Camille, do you have questions?
Not yet. Come back to me. I hadn't raised my hand. Thanks.
Okay, just making sure everybody gets a chance. Paris?
Yeah, I'm kind of where Camille is. Like, I've been looking at numbers and I think folks have kind of like touched on everything. I think the one thing that I am wanting to hear about is the one penny, one cent penny for affordable housing. I know right now we're not really giving the full penny. And I'm wondering if we were, and we got to that 958 amount, what that means in terms of partnership in homelessness and the other funding that was requested as for IFC. And so we'd just like to hear some feedback around that.
Okay. If, if, if I'm hearing you right, you're asking for, I mean, it would be a significant increase, because right now it's what, 688, Amy, that we're looking at. So we would go from 688 to 958 if we increase that. Now, how you utilize that money would be up to the council, obviously. And it could go towards some of the things that we've talked about tonight, whether it's IFC, it could go towards, it could go towards the, the partnership and homelessness funding requests if council wants to go that route. It could go towards other nonprofit projects in, in, in town in the way that we have invested affordable housing dollars in the past. So it would give you a significant bump there on an annual basis to address affordable housing needs within the, within the community.
Yeah, I just think it's important as we're thinking about, you know, the affordable housing crisis and not really siloing, you know, these issues, because being able to achieve our affordable housing goals also helps in achieving ending homelessness goals. And so just want to keep that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think that needs to be part of a larger discussion that we have about our approach to addressing affordable housing. A lot of our focus, understandably, has been on creating new units, preserving units here, working with our nonprofit partners to do the same. And we've seen some really good success there. We've got a number of projects that are on the horizon, a- as we're, as we're moving forward over the course of the next couple of years. So we're excited about that. But I think we do need to have a discussion about all of the different facets of affordable housing and how interconnected they are. And this is a good time to do that. It's not a, it's not a great time in that you have to make some decision about the budget over the course of the next month, but it's a good time to continue that conversation or, or elevate that conversation to a different level with our partners regionally, so that we get, you know, we have some direction on how to move forward over the course of the next three, four, five months or so, maybe coming back in the fall with council and having a really good discussion about where we'd like to go in, in the future and how, as you mentioned, Council Member Miller Fashi, how it's all kind of interconnected and, and dependent on, on each other. And we, you know, success in one area could mean success in another area that we're just not thinking about right now.
Yeah, thank you for lifting the nuance there. And it is a, a conversation. But I do think as we, we do need to bridge this, and it will be important to get more information. I know you and I've had some conversations around some stuff, and I really appreciate the perspectives that you, you've brought forth with that. So thanks.
Thank you.
Pam, can I just add one more question, if you wouldn't mind? Just occurred to me, something that Paris had triggered it. Was it a, was it a couple weeks ago, we sort of ratified the current iteration of the manufactured home, you know, housing strategy. But I don't see, you know, if things start happening with that over the next year, I don't see any place in the budget where there's money to pay for anything that we might do with that strategy.
It could be in ARPA dollars. We, we included, we included that as a possibility with some of the ARPA dollars if council wanted to go that route.
So are we going to then keep?
We could keep a reserve. Absolutely. We could, we could establish a reserve. The only, the only caveat to that is we have to have it spent by a certain time. Yeah.
Isn't there already a reserve for?
Only the county.
No, I thought we had a reserve that we use when we use to park apartments and all that kind of stuff. We had a reserve.
Oh, when you're talking about a kind of an emergency housing type of thing, I, I was thinking, and I don't know where we are with that, if we saw funding in there, but I know that I, I was responding to Council Member Parker's very specific interest in manufactured homes. And we, we have put that on, on the list of possibilities if council wants to go that route with, with some funding from ARPA to have some money put aside that could allow us to be responsive if something were to happen soon.
We have 1.3 million dollars sitting in our affordable housing fund. That, I think, Mayor Heminger is what you're talking about. And I don't know that any of those funds are dedicated for anything at this time, but we could follow up with that information.
Yeah. I know we had a, I just, I didn't know what the fund was called, but I knew we had a fund there to help. Um, could, I know over the years, it's gone back and forth between Public Works and Parks and Rec about who's in charge of landscaping and where the budget falls. Can you talk a little bit about the difference between, is pub, is all of landscaping in town under Parks and Rec? Or does Public Works do any of that? I'm just trying to get a feel. When we talk about the Parks and Rec budget, I mean, they're, they're seem to be responsible for, you know, maintaining the landscaping around Town Hall, maintaining the landscaping around all of our buildings and greenways and things like that, which may not really be part of the Parks Department. So can you talk a little bit about how that breaks out?
It's, it's actually, and we can, we can get the numbers for you, but it's actually not unusual for Parks Departments to, to handle that type of thing. And as you mentioned, you know, I've spoken about this. It has, that, that group has pinged back and forth between Public Works and Parks and Rec for a while now. And they do most of that, that work. There are, we also, we do have some of our funding that goes towards contractors that provide some level of service around town and our medians and, and other places. But for the most part, that work is done by, by Parks and Recreation.
So when we talk about a full Parks and Rec budget and a percentage of the overall general fund, it feels a little overinflated because they take care of, of things that aren't truly Parks and Rec oriented. I guess is what I'm trying to say. So when we talk about those kinds of things. Okay. Um, I think I, most of my other questions. So I wanted to see from council, Maurice, if you're willing to put the list of questions back up so that we can ask council comments back on?
I did have, I didn't have a, I do have one question that hasn't been asked. The cultural arts, community arts and culture. Maurice, you and I talked about this earlier today, and I said I would bring it up tonight. The $20,000 that's been suggested in this plan is not to fund our folks, not to fund their efforts, but to, what's been suggested is that it would fund nonprofits that deliver art.
That's correct. That's what we've heard from council in, you know, the last couple of years, when we, well, prior to the pandemic especially, there was an interest in doing more for, for the arts. And I think the focus at that point was on providing some additional funding for nonprofits who work within the arts.
Right. And I was asking earlier, just what resources are we providing? Is this council providing to that effort on our staff to, for the staff, for the delivery of the programming that we would like to see, that we enjoy, that we celebrate? You know, we just celebrated the exhibition that's in the library. How are we funding the charge that we've put on Susan and her team? And we even have an advisory board dedicated to this, but I don't see the budget that backs it up. So I am curious about that. If we truly believe in this effort, and we are willing to have volunteers show up month after month, giving their time, and we have staff who celebrate and say, look, this is what we've brought to town. I am curious, fellow council members, how we are funding this effort and not just our partners. So that's a question that I have, that I'm going to be looking to see, where are we funding this effort that we say we believe in?
Would you like me to?
Sure, Amy.
I can share just some information. I think in the budget where you would see that, and maybe it doesn't stand out, is, is part of the library budget. So it is in the section when you're looking at the budget in the library. So we have basically three separate kind of divisions now in the library, the library itself, so operating the, the building and the facilities. Then we have a, a community arts division, and that has an existing budget of about $233,000. And that's made up of, I think, about four, two, two staff people. I think they have six total between community arts and I think the special events. So 232,000 allocated here, and then special events has 278,000. So there are some general fund dollars that are allocated.
And they're, they're dedicated just to the cultural arts?
Yes.
And how long?
Special events.
Okay. And how long? And that, that funds how many people?
Um, I know, I believe it's four. And then you include Susan and Megan, so, you know, director and assistant director, they, they are also helping facilitate those events and activities. So it's really four positions that are dedicated in those dollars, and then plus some of Susan's and Megan's time.
Okay. Have we seen an increase in that budget? Or has it held steady?
The increase, the only increase that we've seen has been tied to personnel increases. And that would be, you know, just across the board in the organization. So we have not allocated additional dollars since these functions have been under the library. They were at one time under Parks and Recreation. I mean, I'd have to go back and, and dig into that and to see if there had been increases in what we've done over the years. Obviously, COVID has certainly caused an impact there.
Sure. So this makes me think of, I'm reflecting on what Amy asked about the climate action and the personnel. You have a bucket for that, and we're trying to keep pace with our staff so we can retain them, because we appreciate them. But what are we allocating for the deliverables for the, the programming? And so I am curious about that. Also, that's not in this, but that 1% that I don't, that penny, that same thing, that they have been expecting. So each month, I get to hear these volunteers say, when are we going to get that? And I think that someone did speak with them, Amy, you may have visited with them during one meeting that I couldn't attend, or someone may have, about how that happens. But, but I am concerned that in this, the priority has been $20,000, and that 20,000 is intended for partners and not to help strengthen this effort.
Well, Councilmember Barry, I would, I certainly understand your, your, your interest in, in seeing us do more when it comes to funding the cultural arts. We have been holding steady there, but yet we're, we are asking them to do more. And they're, they're, they're great at coming up with, with great ideas for how we can increase activities here and bring people together for events and that type of thing. So I, I certainly, certainly appreciate the, the focus on that. And it is something if council is interested in, we would certainly, you know, welcome some additional funding to, to help them do that job and expand what they've done. Because I think they've done a really nice job. They were, they were hitting their stride before the pandemic. That kind of slowed things down, but they've got, they've got a lot of pent up energy since then. And they've come up with some really good ideas over the course of the last years. Things have opened up a little bit more to come up with different festivals, but it does take time, energy and money to put those on.
All right. It takes all three. And then one more thing, the housing, I do want to go back to that. I know it's been lifted, and I'd like to lift it again. Some years ago was the penny for housing, and then that number held steady, but the percentage dropped. So you and I looked at that number today, and it's about 0.71% of a penny. And frankly, I would like to see more than a cent allocated. I know that our partners have advocated for two pennies. I'm not saying that, but I think that we have a housing crisis. And so I think it's warranted that we put more money towards housing, more than a penny. So that's, I, we have been holding steady, do you know when we stopped, when that amount was fixed, that 688?
A one.
Eighty, when? Since when?
Second year it was fixed. The first year it was a penny, and the next year it was locked in.
So what year was that?
It was 2017.
2017?
No, I'm sorry, 2015. It was 2015 when we started.
Okay. All right. Right. I was at Community Home Trust. I remember advocating for the bond at that time. So that means that we have not kept pace, that we have let that, what we said was a priority slide. And so I would like for us to slide up on that. Thank you.
Pam, before we get to the questions, I have sort of a process issue, uh, which? Which is number one, I'm not sure we're ready for the questions, but more importantly, the way this conversation is being framed and the way the questions are being framed, it's using as, you know, the, the tax rate that has been proposed as a given. And so everything is being framed as a zero sum question. If we add this, why do we reduce? And I'm not, I'm not willing to have the discussion on those terms yet. I think we need to have a conversation about what we think the town needs and then look at the implications in terms of the tax rate and then make a decision rather than, you know, if we do economic development, we can't do this. If, you know, I mean, the question, you know, are you comfortable with where we have made cuts to balance out the new funding? So, you know, I think we really need not to be having this conversation as a zero sum game, but really look at having an honest conversation about what we think our priorities are and whether they're being adequately addressed.
I, I hear you. I think there's a way to, to approach both issues because the manager, this was our first work session on the budget, was trying to get a feel for if the recommendations were resonating or did he hear us accurately when we asked for certain things? We had some more requests come in like you saw. I do want to go back to Camille's statements and give a couple of clarifying things. It's the 1% for art program on capital projects, not one penny. So it's 1% on art. Okay, on town bill. And originally the 23,000 that the Arts Commission had access to was to pay artists for art around town that was either displayed at Town Hall or at the library or at any other public facility temporarily. And those exhibits would change every month. And they were running against a, a problem with not having enough funding to help pay for that program. Once, when it moved into the library, Susan, I think changed that program, but I don't have an awareness of how it fits into what's going on. We haven't displayed art at our public facilities during COVIDs. I'm not sure where those monies went. Or maybe they've been banked in there, but that was the original intention of the money that the Arts Commission used was for purchase, or sorry, for paying artists for displaying, being allowed to showcase their art in different places. We talked about having some sculptures downtown, things like that. So that was the original plan with those monies versus the money that the library department has for arts, if that makes any sense. But the commission was really dedicated towards compensating artists for using their art to be displayed. Like I said, I don't know if you ever noticed in Town Hall, there used to, it used to be all on the walls inside and in a library as well, but that's all changed. So I don't have a, a good understanding either of what we're doing with that. So maybe we should ask what, what's intended for the monies that they have currently and the proposed $20,000.
The 23 and a half thousand right now that is being allocated was a replacement for two line items in the town budget. One was for Kid Zoo, one is for the Art Center. And that's what the 23 and a half thousand goes for.
The, the annual funding.
Yes. Yeah. Those are two basic allocations that have been going on for a number of years now. So it goes to Kid Zoo and it goes to the Art Center. And that's the only, you know, organizational extramural support that we have for cultural arts in Chapel Hill right now.
Yeah. Okay. That's good enough. Um, I do want to share on the affordable housing front too. I know we all want to do more. I didn't understand that the rate had been frozen when I first came into office. We had other ways we were doing affordable housing things. We do spend over $6 million a year in, in all the different buckets that we have, not including the so-called penny for housing. And then we have the, the $10 million bond. So I, I don't think it's fair to say we haven't kept up. I can say, I can say that it's fair to say that the penny isn't generating a penny anymore. And we, when Roger was here, we talked about not directly allocating line item to line item because you can get caught when you have a bad year where your, you know, your rates drop or you re-normalize and all those kinds of things. But I do hear you and Maurice and I have talked about how to bring that back up so we feel better about the annual amount that we're dedicating to mostly to our nonprofit groups to help with housing. But we have other buckets that we use for helping with affordable housing as well. So, um, and we can send you that document because we send it out to our, um, our state reps all the time, telling them all the different things we do between donations of land. You saw that in the report this time, um, getting credit for doing those kinds of things. Which are town resources that are spent on affordable housing, purchasing land, donating land, staff time, um, running public housing. So we do, we do an incredible amount for a town our size, what we all want to do better and more because we know it's a desperate need. We do understand that. So.
Right. I think what would be helpful Pam, especially for those of us who are new, is to see those hard dollars. So it may not be the percentage, but how are we compared to 2015 when that penny was put in? How does it look? How did it look before 2015? How have we evolved? I would like to see the hard numbers as well.
I think that'd be good for our housing department because we've grown it since 2015 quite a bit, um, out there. All right. Amy had her hand up.
Yeah, I'd just like to respond quickly to Michael's comment. I think it's, uh, I think it's a good point. It's an important thing that I think we need to address upfront. And the, the way I'm looking at it is we, we're in a very good position. We have come off because we had conservative management during COVID. We have fund balance. We have seen great sales tax growth. We have ARPA funds coming in. We're, we're really in a pretty nice financial position. So, so that's very good. And I think that it, it gives us a chance to do the things that we value. And what the manager's budget is telling me is that what we are valuing most highly right now is our employees. Where there are, there's four million in extra dollars in this budget for our employees, right? So when you think about, I'm very concerned about raising taxes when we're in such a great financial position. We have people who've been suffering during, during the pandemic. I, I really would hate, I think I can understand why we may need some money for transit. And I think I could support that because those are real concrete needs for a very important community service. But otherwise, um, if we're making this level of investment in our people, which I think Maurice has made a very strong case for, I have a hard time than asking for more money from our, from our community. So I think we are making a very big, very important investment this year, but it's in, it's in our employees and our staff.
Maurice, could you help me? Can you remind me of when we?
Camille, can you please raise your hand so we can take your turns?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was more casual. Okay.
And you've spoken quite a bit recently and I know other people have been waiting to speak as well. I've seen hands go up and down.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Somebody, somebody actually had their hand up. Who put it down? All right. Well, Camille, go ahead. They're being shy.
Great. Thanks, folks. So the, Maurice, remind me, what was our tax rate before and when did it drop?
So our tax rate last year was 54.4 cents. Um, and we went through a discussion with council because we have the revow. And it's always a, a good time to evaluate where your, your tax rate is. And in the previous two revows and council members who were around can correct me if I'm wrong. The council had gone back to revenue neutral tax rates. Last year we did not go to, go back to revenue neutral. We went to 52.4 to address the needs that we had within our organization. So we went from, or 51.4. We went, so we went from 54.4 cents on the doll, on a hundred dollars of assessed value to 51.4.
So we actually dropped last year.
Drop that, where we dropped the tax rate.
I get that people paid more, paid more because of
On average.
The property tax, but we actually lowered our taxes.
Our tax rate.
Our tax rate, our tax rate. So when I read folks' comments about, um, you keep raising our taxes, our tax rate, that's, that doesn't seem consistent. That doesn't seem to agree, right?
Well, if you look, I mean, once again, if, if the tax rate.
And I'm talking about the town. I'm not talking about other, I'm not talking about the county.
Right. I mean, if you look at, so the tax rate was lowered, right, from 54.4 to 51.4. But taxes on the average went up.
Okay. So we were being considerate of the impact of the property tax assessment and lowered it.
That was certainly part of the conversation last year. I think behind council lowering the rate.
Okay. I just wanted.
All right, Karen, then Adam?
I think Adam was first, actually. Go ahead.
Oh, I think we, just talking about taxes. I mean, nobody, you know, we never, that's the, the not as much fun thing you do as the elected official is raise people's taxes to pay for the stuff, the fun stuff, which is you want to spend money on. So I think you have to do, you know, consider both. And yeah, people did write bigger checks to the town of Chapel Hill than the last time we did the, you know, did the revaluation. So that's the thing. I, you know, just since we're on the tax, um, question, I am very, very concerned about raising the tax rate. And I, it's, um, you know, we're in a period of really high inflation, high gas prices, high prices at the supermarket for everybody. And, you know, especially for folks who don't have as much money, this is a huge, huge hit. So very, you know, I, I think we should just be so, so reluctant to do so. I'm just, I'm surprised that some of our partner governments are just, you know, seem to be moving ahead with, uh, with doing that. But the, the, um, part that I think is the, you know, is also concerning to me is that we do, like Amy was saying, we are in this good position. We did see this big increase in our, um, sales tax, uh, you know, revenues. And so when you're sitting there with this big chunk in sales taxes, you know, it is just, it's difficult for me to see the, you know, to see the half cent, even though I totally support, you know, the transit, that's the one place that I think we, you know, that this might be justified. But boy, it's, you know, we have those sales tax rates. And of course, you know, we're estimating, right? Maurice, we're estimating the amount that we will get from the sales tax, right?
It could be higher, it could be lower.
Could be higher, could be lower. It could be, it could be we don't have this. So I guess that's sort of where I am with that. And I have, I have more thoughts about specific, specific parts of the budget, but I'll hold those for right now.
You can share if you want. I mean.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah. So, so I, you know, I think given the situation that we're in with high inflation, I'm totally, you know, prioritizing our employees absolutely 100%. And that is for me, you know, what we should be doing is a tough, tough time. I do think, you know, and while I'm open to discussing increasing the, you know, what we pay the council, I just may not be the right year to do it. And the, when you have inflation, when we're talking about raising the tax rate, um, and we have, you know, these stress on our employees, I'm thinking maybe for just this one time, you know, we give, you know, you could take that same amount of money we're proposing, give one-time bonuses to our lowest paid employees of probably a couple hundred bucks or something. And then revisit it next year. So that's my first thought. Second thought is very, you know, if there is a way that we can accomplish what we can accomplish for a transit, you know, out of that sales tax amount somehow, and without hurting the amounts we want to give to our employees, I would like to explore that. Because I just, I'm really, very reluctant. We have the third highest tax rate, you know, combined in the, you know, of any municipality in North Carolina. I think raising it even more is something that I'm reluctant to do right at the moment. So those are my two extra comments.
Michael confirmed, we can't use sales tax monies for.
Well, we don't. Basically, transit is an enterprise fund. And so it has its own tax levy and then it gets money from the partners, from the feds, from the state and other sources. But historically, certainly since I've been on council and checking with Brian since he's been in town, we have never used general fund monies to support transit. And so all of the sales tax revenue go into the general fund. None of it goes to transit. So the, the only source of town money for transit is the town's transit tax. We, no sales tax monies have, I mean, they could, but you'd have to rejuggle the way we do our budget. But no general funds have ever gone to transit.
Now, we're in charge, right? We could do it. I mean, yeah.
Could. You can do lots of things. Yes.
I had Karen, then I see Amy, and then Michael, did you have one?
That's what I wanted to mention.
Okay. Karen, then Amy, then Paris?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Thanks. About the tax question, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty, you know, conflicted about it. It's obviously a really weighty question and, um, something we need to consider very carefully. My, you know, it, we are in a good place, um, which is, which is great. But part of the reason we're in a good place is because we've cut so much of our resources, of the town's resources. Over the last couple of years and through COVID, you know, we just cut staff, we froze positions, we, you know, we starved the town. And that's why we're behind on, you know, some of these, you know, infrastructure and, um, vehicle replacement and parks upkeep. And because we, we have been so cautious and planned for COVID, I think Maurice very wisely. And, and because the county always just does what they're going to do, we're always really cautious and like, oh, well, the county's doing it, so we don't want to do it. But we keep putting the town last in that list. And, um, you know, inflation is, it's hard because what's hitting our residents is also hitting the town. Our costs are more expensive. Our, um, you know, as Michael was talking about fuel and, um, you know, construction costs and everything we're trying to do also costs more money. And so if we don't raise taxes, we're just continuing the starvation cycle that's going to make us pay more later. So it's, it's really hard. And that's kind of where I, I'm wrestling with that. I, I'm not, I don't, I don't know where I stand yet on it because it's really a tough question. But I, I don't want to just kick the can down the road and have another council be, you know, like, oh wow, we should have fixed this 20 years ago, not 10 years ago, you know? So that's, that's kind of what I'm wrestling with. Um, I do support the full eight, whatever, eight, eighth of a cent or whatever it is, um, for transit. I think that's clearly needed and Brian's made the case and I'm, I'm 100% there. Yeah. Whether we do more, I, I'm, I'm still kind of wrestling with that. I, uh, also want to add, in terms of priority, you know, I know the partner, partnership in house, houses, homelessness and I see asks are coming, you know, kind of late. Um, I think, I feel like we have, um, heard from Ricks and from this council and we've already provided some funding support to SORAD. I feel like that's the top priority for a lot of folks. So I hope between, it's, I feel very, not just hope, um, very strongly between the leftover Ricks funding and finding a bit more funding, um, in this year's budget, that at least we can fund SORAD and then talk about the other, um, needs, which are really important as well. Um, I'm really heartened at the discussion around, um, you know, making that connection between our affordable housing work and, um, you know, hopefully preventing and addressing, you know, helping people experiencing homelessness. You know, homelessness is the absence of housing and we know that's a huge issue in this town. And I think separating them out is, is not really reflecting the reality of, um, kind of what our responsibility as a community is in terms of housing our residents. So I really am happy to hear that we're making those connections a little more explicitly. And, uh, so, you know, I think the rapid rehousing, again, this is a longer conversation, but I think these are really important. And again, as we're thinking about the impacts of COVID, um, and we are seeing the price of housing going, you know, in crazy and, you know, we talk a lot about how we aren't doing enough to meet the kind of lowest, it was zero to 30% AMI. And, you know, those are members of our community as well. And so I want us to make sure we're talking about the whole continuum of, of housing needs from complete lack up through, you know, market rate. Um, and, and we know we're, we're lacking in all of it. So, um, that's definitely continues to be a priority for me. Um, and figuring out what we can do in this budget to do as much as we can, um, this year.
I had Amy, then Paris, then Jess.
Yeah. Do you want to move to the questions? Um, I was just going to respond to, Michael was talking about the, um, the enterprise fund and the transit. We, the parking is an enterprise fund also, right? And we, um, we do general fund transfers to them. So it's, it's certainly something that could be done if there was a reason to do it. Did you, so do you want to go to questions or comments or how are you?
You can make comments. We're going to have to wrap this up in about 15 minutes to get to our next topic. This is not our only discussion on the budget. We're just trying to give the manager more information right now. So anything you want to share right now about your thoughts? You already shared about the tax rate and.
I shared about the tax rate. Um, I mean, I, I still, I'm still not convinced about the compensation analyst position. Given that we just finished paying a consultant, I, I, I don't doubt your, your need for one on an ongoing basis. But whether that's something we need to do this year, um, if there's money that that could be spent other places. Um, if there's money that that could be spent other places, if you could just think about that a little bit more. Um, and I wanna make sure, again, you know, the earlier question I had about how we're funding those, those climate positions, I just wanna make sure that we're really making an investment in there and not, um, you know, I mean, we have, there are lots of crises in the world, but if the world overheats, none of, none of the other stuff matters, right? So we just really, we, and, and we can be a leader in this, and I'd really like to see us do that. John has done some really, really good foundational work, um, that I think we can build on. So um, and I don't know that I'm necessarily asking for more money for that this year, but as, on an ongoing basis, I've just learned that Chatham, for instance, has now um, assigned a half FTE of one of their planners to doing environmental planning. So that they have when, um, when a development comes through, they've got somebody who knows all, they know the stormwater, they know the wildlife, they know the rivers, they know the land plans, and they pull those all together so that those things are really being part of all their land planning decisions and their development review decisions. Um, so the county, then he's been there for like four months, he's so excited, he's doing a great job. So, you know, if we can start to get climate pulled into our other work in those ways, I think that would be great. And again, maybe I, I, I think your, your investment in employees makes sense in this budget, but as we move forward, I wanna think about that as well. Um, and I just support Pam in asking that we break out that parks and rec budget so we get a true idea of what are, what we're actually spending on facilities and recreation and what we're spending on other maintenance tasks. Operationally, I don't care how you, how they're um, they're mixed up together, but I just wanna make sure that I understand kind of what big pots those resources are going into. And um, thank you.
Right. Paris and Jess?
Thank you. I just wanted to reframe the um, stipend increase. Um, really needs to be looked at, not just as giving a raise for ourselves, because this isn't a position that I wanna be in for the rest of my life. Um, none of us do. It really is speaking to equity. And our stipend is really low. If we look at um, our stipend in comparison to um, other municipalities and low stipends really impact um, diversity and representation. And representation is already skewed to wealthier and in many cases, whiter representation. And so I wanna make sure that um, we are being inclusive of all of our community members to be able to, to participate in our democracy. We need to make sure that we have working class perspectives um, and policymaking that really provides, you know, perspective and nuance to the needs of our population. And many of us serving today, we're not insulated from many of the challenges that our communities face right now. Um, and there's, you know, I know council members who struggle to just find a place, affordable home to live in. And I think we should be able to, you know, afford to live in the community that we are serving.
Can you give us your perspective, Paris, on tax increase, no tax increase, just so we're getting it? And you don't have, you can say maybe. I have, I have a couple of you down for maybe, so.
No, I think our transit um, is, is key to us wanting to reach a lot of our goals. And we've heard from the department head that we need that um, point eight percent increase. And so I support that. Um, I'm also supportive um, of a further increase in the tax. So that's where I'm at.
Further increase in the property tax?
Yes.
Okay. Jess? And Ty?
Um, yeah, I um, whoo, we somehow like had questions up on the screen and now we've gone a different place. Um, I think, um, I like the idea generally of just thinking about housing and homelessness and how those things work together. I do think there's also a conversation to be had about when we invest in in more units versus more staff. I think we need to figure out where that balance lies. I don't know that we're there yet, but I think we are gonna get to a point where we're gonna have to start thinking about um, really, um, you know, what's gonna be most effective, units or additional staff in various positions. Um, I um, I really would like us to um, to focus too on, um, I think Karen, you brought up something earlier, and I'm sorry, I'm tired, so I don't remember what exactly it was, but just talking about, um, oh, it was about launch and effectiveness. And I think that's something that um, that I just find really important, that I think generally we need to think about not just if our programs or our initiatives make us feel good, but if they actually do good. Um, and really being serious about making sure that things are effective. And I know that that's predictable from a policy person, but I actually believe policy works and that it matters and that having good policies and having good evaluation of our programs is absolutely critical to actually meeting our community's needs. So I think I would like to, to start thinking about, not for this budget cycle, but um, in the future, how are we going to, I think, you know, hopefully do a better job of evaluating all of our programs um, and all the things we give money to, to make sure that um, that we're meeting our goals and that we're um, doing the right thing for our community members in our community and not just feeling good that we're doing something. Um, so I would really like us to start thinking about that. Um, I also, I don't exactly understand the comp analyst position, but um, I too would have a question of whether we can push that off a year, given that we just did a, a big comp and class study. I don't, I don't totally understand it, but I would agree that would be um, something, just um, if you could think about it more, I think that would be helpful. Um, I also, I think it's a good idea to figure out what does Parks and Rec do versus um, some of our other departments. I think that would be helpful. Um, and generally, I think in terms of a tax increase, I certainly support the trans, the transit need. Um, I would be hard pressed to find, I think, right at this moment, people are struggling and feeling really uncertain about what things look like. And I would love for us to have better coordination, communication and reliance on each other in terms of the county so that they don't just keep increasing taxes and then we have to be reactive to that. I don't think that's fair to our community. But I also know the reality that people are gonna be facing a higher tax bill this year yet again. Um, and it does worry me about what that impact would look like. It's not that I'm unwilling to think about it, but it would have, I, right now, I, I feel um, worried about the idea of raising taxes more than for the transit need, which is clearly, um, I think is a clear need. Um, so I am certainly leaning towards not wanting any additional tax increase, but I don't know what I don't know yet. So I'm open to hearing and understanding more about what that could look like.
Okay, Ty?
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. So first, I definitely support uh, increasing the transit levy to the eight tenths uh, or whatever of the cent that was requested by the partnership, um, especially given, you know, our investment is almost what tripled based on the investments of the partners. Um, getting the housing back to the penny level is definitely of interest, but I think going off of what Paris and Karen were saying uh, and Jess about including what our homelessness initiatives and that work within that sphere, um, because, you know, it is a spectrum of housing and that is the same realm. Um, I am open to a tax increase. Um, I'm still on the fence about it. If we, but I would, I will say, um, if we were to do any sort of tax increase uh, or tax rate increase, I would want us to establish a fund, uh, much like the county did for those households um, who'd be, you know, disproportionately impacted and, and look into that. Um, economic development position, very, very supportive of that. Uh, I originally had some hesitations about where you were moving the money from for that. Um, I think the compression stuff is really important, especially if we want to retain our talent. Um, but Maurice, if you're confident that, um, you know, the excess fund balance stuff can help cover that, that move, um, then I trust you and I'm good with that. Um, and then I think the increase in funding for the cultural arts is also important. Um, and one thing specifically within that uh, is I know our poet laureate stipend is like nonexistent. Um, and I know that uh, our poet laureate has requested an increase in that stipend uh, for a few years now. Uh, and obviously with COVID and stuff, we weren't able to do that. And I think, um, now that we're in a, a much better position, I think, you know, giving our, our poet laureate an increase um, is much warranted. And I think that was the last thing I, oh, I'm sorry. And I, I didn't mention this, but the SORAD funding, I definitely agree that, um, at the very least, we do need to uh, to fund that. I think it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand. I'm seeing a nod, so yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, Michael then Camille?
Yeah, I just uh, wanna address a couple of things. Um, so number one, yeah, since we're we sort of morphed a little bit into wish lists. Uh, and I strongly support doing more for the cultural arts, you know, I just feel personally like a hypocrite because we're always touting how strong Chapel is as an arts community. And then you look at our budget and sure doesn't look like it. Uh, so I think I'd like to get us to at least forty or fifty thousand over, you know, total. You know, so that we really have some money for the Cultural Arts Commission to start dealing with much the way that the Human Services Advisory Board deals with that funding. Uh, but really start making, you know, and, and we know that in this time, the arts community was hit very hard by COVID. Uh, you know, they were ineligible for PPP and a lot of the other relief programs. So anything we can do to start helping, you know, that community, I think is really critical. Uh, you know, I, if, if it wasn't obvious, you know, I strongly support funding transit at the point eight tenths of a penny. Uh, it's, we just need the money. We gotta continue our bus replacement program. We've already fallen a couple of years behind. Uh, the operating expenses literally, you know, like week to week have been going up. Uh, diesel fuel is pushing on five dollars. I don't know what, I don't know what Magic Brian was able to do with his deal. I'm sure it was a good one. Brian, we've been really effective in, you know, you know, contracting for fuel at favorable rates, but we, we really have some issues there. And it's really important in that we get a multiplier effect because UNC and Carboro have already agreed to fund it at that level, but they want, but the way Chapel Hill Transit works is if we don't put in the money, they don't put in the money. And so there is this real multiplier effect. And so I just think it's absolutely critical. In terms of raising other taxes, uh, I'm not, I'm not advocating for it. I just, I wanna be really clear about that. I wanna, I just want us to have a good discussion about what our priorities are, what our needs are. And then let's take a look and then we can make a decision, you know, what we wanna do about taxes. I just think it's, you know, a little bit backward to make a decision about taxes until you know what you actually need to spend, that's all. Um, but I'm not advocating for, but I'm not, you know, drawing a line in the sand and saying I would never do it either. Um, I think that was, you know, everything, I support the economic development position. One thing I would like to see, however, is both in terms of that position, but in terms of economic development generally, is perhaps a, an update on our strategy and see how we're doing, uh, you know, what our strategy is, what are our areas of emphasis and make sure it's aligned with some of the other things we're doing, you know, in terms of equity. Uh, I think there's an important connection to be made between racial equity and economic development in this community. And then lastly, I was gonna send an email, but I'll mention it, I will send the email later. But I would like to see perhaps when we come back in September, a review of where we are with our economic incentives, uh, how much we've paid out, how much, you know, who's met the goals, who hasn't met the goals, who's on the road to meeting the goals, and then also looking at it to see when some of those things will be over and start thinking about what the impact is going to be on our, you know, budget as you know, the, you know, some of these, most of these things are five-year deals. I think Caraway must be pretty close to done by now. So let's, you know, I'd like to look and see how they're gonna start playing back into our budget uh, in terms of tax revenues that, you know, we foregone in order to meet those incentives.
Okay. Camille?
Thanks. Um, I still have questions about the economic development position. Um, if we need it, we need it. I, as I said on, in Friday's meeting, I'm concerned that this council made the decision to move a position out of what I understand was the planning department into the economic development uh, department. And then we find out that they're already overstretched and we need a new position. So that just doesn't sit well with me. Um, back in February, I see one council member's face um, that looks confused. Back in February, I think it was, we were asked for a thumbs up or a thumbs down in our Economic Sustainability Committee meeting for do we move um, the Rod Stevenson work to that department, to the Economic Development Department. And I had questions about that, and that was squeezed in at the very end of that meeting. And I remember speaking um, afterwards and saying I wasn't comfortable on, on that. So what I'm saying is, there are many things that we try to be mindful of. Uh, and we've said that tonight, we want to be mindful of how we progress with IFC. We want to be mindful of how we progress with um, the partnership to end homelessness. It, the commitments that we make are not, um, they're not light. They, there are repercussions to the, the decisions. And so I want to make sure that I understand that if we move a project, how does that impact? And so that, that's one reservation that I have. That's why I couldn't give a thumbs up tonight. But um, if we need that position, I certainly want economic development to thrive. I just wanna be aware of what we're doing and not um, not have it squeezed in. Um, am I, let's see, I'm gonna follow the transit, yes. I do absolutely support that. I think that it is justified um, to support that, that increase. And if we've already gotten the um, commitments from the others, I say we go for it. Uh, it would be criminal for us not to. And then um, I'm not advocating for raising taxes just for doing so and just because we had lowered it, but I want us to be aware that um, back to what Karen said, I don't want us to starve ourselves, our services. When I asked Maurice today about a service, um, a DocuSign, uh, because other other governments are able to receive information electronically, um, we don't have that capacity. And that is, that just troubles me, that Carboro, Orange County, they have that capacity, but we don't, we don't have that technology. So I want to support our staff in many ways, not just in their compensation, but also in the tools that they have to use. We are way behind, way, way behind. So that's where I am. I really am in support. I'm looking at my list here um, of the transit, though. Thank you.
All right. I'll wrap up with my opinion and we'll see if the manager has any more questions from us. Um, I also support the transit tax. I agree with the comments that have been said. I think we need to do it now because I think trying to put it back in next year or the year after is gonna be too late for some of these things. And we do have increasing costs and we do get the matching dollars from others. And it does help, and we're gonna get a grant writer in. It does help when you're trying to look for grant matches too, so have that money. Um, I am not a proponent though of raising taxes in general. I, I'm willing to do it for the transit directly. Um, for, for many reasons. One, we're adding a lot of new things this budget, uh, hopefully that we're looking at because we had that growth of eight point nine percent. Um, we have some ground to make up, but we had a hefty fund balance at the end of last year, and I'm predicting we're gonna have a hefty fund balance at the end of this year because you didn't fill as many positions just because the job market was too tough out there. And we can pull monies from those places. And when you have that hefty fund balance, it makes it hard to say to the public, oh, yeah, we spent, you know, an extra four million because we had overages in our account because we, you know, your tax bill went up and we spent the money. And we banked some, we put some in reserve um, for next year, just in case. So I just, I'm having a hard time seeing where you wanna raise. I'm very supportive of the economic development position. We've been talking about downtown together, the downtown portfolio, all the work we wanna do there, which falls under economic development as well. And the more we invest in economic development, it's been proven across the country, the more results you give back for your community in creation of jobs. That's our number one goal. in creation of jobs. That's our number one goal, but to diversify our tax base. Um, if the manager feels he's got a good way to make that happen, I yield to him. And again, he's also got the flexibility of next year to pull from fund balance if we need to for some reason, for other things that may not come um just for for different reasons. Um. I do think it's time to up the stipend that this council gets for equity reasons. It's always concerned me as well. You've seen our neighboring districts do it. Um, you saw Wake County propose to go up to sixty six thousand dollars. I have no idea per person because they've declared themselves full-time work. I have no idea what that percentage raise is, but that's gotta be astronomical. Um, but you're seeing that all across the country. Actually, people need to be compensated to be able to do the work, but also to give the equity for people who have to give up other revenue sources or need that extra income in order to justify cutting back in their other position or paying for the childcare so they can participate in their local government as well. So I'm very supportive of that. And we're hopeful that it's a two-year step up. Um, that's, that was sort of the goal to try to make it um adjust up as we can. Um. We definitely, SORAD has been a great program, helping everyone, helping the people that needed it the most, um, helping the community. And I agree, I do think that the um partnership to end homelessness is tied to the housing, affordable housing that all ties together. We take a look at that and make sure how that works together. So I think um those are the comments. Are there more questions you have for us that you, did you give you enough background to come back on the?
Yes, absolutely. We we have gotten some good uh feedback from council tonight. We can um go back and um and take that information and uh put it together into a package of uh of of information for council for next week and and beyond with the other work sessions. So it's a good discussion that we had tonight. Thank you, council. That
Okay, I know we didn't directly answer all the questions, but I think we sort of
And I'd like to, I'd just like to point out that, you know, we put the questions up there, as you said, Mayor, to just help us have an understanding of where council is generally. It wasn't to to uh to assume that there are any decisions made at all. Um, and especially the transit question, because that's that that will help us as we're moving forward and and having that discussion with council about uh addressing those needs in transit, but then also the other needs that we have within our organization. So it was a good, I think it was a good discussion tonight. We certainly weren't trying to paint anybody into a corner or make any assumptions about what council felt at this moment in time.
Great, thank you. Okay. That brings us to the next item on our agenda. I'll make sure we can write the proposed American Rescue Plan funding.
Okay, uh, good evening again, Mayor and Council. I am uh back this evening along with Sarah Fulton. Uh, I will be doing the majority of the talking, but she is here to support and answer any questions um and help on that front uh with an update on the American Rescue Plan Act funding. So for this evening, uh, first, we will cover and present a suggestion for how to break down the remaining ten million dollars in American Rescue Plan funding across several categories that we've heard council express an interest in in allocating these funds. We'll then dive into some details on projects we've heard from you, departments and the community in each of those categories. We'll then summarize by talking about potential next steps. And while we describe each category tonight, please be thinking about what projects you're most interested in funding and whether the amount of money that we've put forward as a proposal, um, just one option uh for each category matches your interests. So we wanted to show this chart. We think it's helpful to show kind of where we are in the process. Um, we have had a request in from our town departments. We've asked them what's important to them tied to these dollars and what they think priorities uh for their departments would look like. We've reached out to our community partners. We've received a lot of input. Sarah did a ton of community outreach, which we got a lot of really great feedback from our community. Um, we decided that the next best step, because we were not quite ready to um put out applications, was to put forward a request for letters of intent from our community partners uh to just get a feel for what needs are in our community and what interests are. And for us to then determine are those eligible for the fund? So that's where we are right now. And our plan would be to come back to council next month to talk a little bit more about that. Applications were due on the thirteenth, so this Friday. Um, so we weren't quite ready to share that today, but we'll come back in June to talk about that and kind of talk about next steps. Um, then what would happen is we would put forward the request for actual applications and we would develop that application process. Applications would be reviewed and we would come back to council looking for approval sometime in the fall uh and hopefully get some dollars into um our partner's hands and our department so that we could begin spending these dollars because they do have um an end date. Monies need to be committed and really um everything we're hearing from the school of governments um and the feds are that they really want to see as much spent as early as possible. Um, so we just have to have funds committed, which means contracted legally obligated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, although they're recommending we do what we can to spend as much as we can by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. But we do have until December thirty first, twenty twenty six to actually spend those dollars. So we wanted to put forward for council um so that we could get your um your thoughts related to one option for a potential funding breakdown. So this is one way we can allocate the funds. Um, note that we actually received ten point six six eight million, but we are rounding down to the ten million because six hundred and fifty thousand was already allocated for revive. So this allocation was put together by town manager and myself based on feedback that we've heard from council and needs submitted by our town departments. In this scenario, we would put a million dollars towards community partner projects, two and a half million towards affordable housing and homelessness initiatives, and some of which could actually fall into the community partner funding, which is why you see some kind of gaps because that two and a half million we're thinking is pretty flexible based on whatever uses we determine our best fit. Two and a half million towards parks and rec infrastructure improvements, one million for bike pad and greenway projects, one million towards town facility needs, a million dollars towards downtown projects, five hundred thousand towards digital inclusion and access projects, and hold five hundred thousand for a community-based budgeting pilot. So here's a visualization of what we just talked about in the last slide and how the funds would be broken down. Note that the big price tag projects, projects like parks are included in town department needs, but we've separated out affordable housing because, as I mentioned, those we're still not sure based on what is determined would be either town initiated projects or community partner projects. So as we walk through the different categories, the first category of money we have set aside for community partners, we are currently receiving letters of intent from interested partners as we speak and will present a list of the eligible projects to you in June. We also have um information to share about what the full application process could look like, how projects will be assessed and how equity will be woven in throughout the process. And just to note again, what we have put forward is just a potential funding option for this pot and category is one million dollars. So our next category is affordable housing and homelessness initiatives. This was of great interest to council in previous discussions and the most common response that we heard in the community survey. This category could be a combination of town initiated projects, community partner projects, homelessness initiatives, utility assistance, and emergency housing assistance. We wanted to also note that Orange County's American Rescue Plan website indicates that they are putting a hundred and sixty thousand towards homelessness initiatives and four point seven million dollars towards emergency housing assistance. That is just in their initial two rounds of funding and they still have about seventeen million dollars more to allocate. So more could be coming in those areas. And what we've put forward in this potential funding plan is two and a half million dollars. So our next category, uh, we have some significant parks and recreation interest from both council and the community survey. So here are some projects that we've heard um from both council and from our departments and the approximate needs for each. Um, also important to note here that this and the next several slides contain lists of projects that add up to much more than we're showing as a potential funding use. So we're just offering these projects as examples of what could be done in each category, but we'll have to make some difficult decisions on what actually gets funded once we get to that point and how those funds would be allocated. So for parks, things that have come up as discussion are the artificial turf, which is the priority project, and that's at one point one five million. The splash pad, that's approximately been estimated at a million, skate park at a million, and an adaptive playground at one and a half million. So another category of projects is sidewalks, bike infrastructure and greenways. Here are some projects that fit into that category, but again, add up to much more than a million dollars. Um, we had to dip into some transportation planning accounts to fund some of the necessary components on the West Franklin Street Rosemary project, and these funds could replenish those accordingly. We would look at two point three million dollars as the need for the Raleigh Road multi-use path. A sidewalk on Ephesus Church Road needs additional funding of about six hundred and thirty thousand. And the Morgan Creek Trail Phase Three East still requires funding as well to proceed, and that's estimated at four million dollars. So town facility needs, this category would cover our facility maintenance and facility needs. Um, we've talked a lot about the five-year budget strategy and shared a lot of information about our particular facility needs. And when those are added up, we have about eleven point four million dollars worth of need that's related to our facilities. Um, but we wanted to highlight a priority project, which is the Homestead Aquatic Center's HVAC units, which are in great need of replacements and based on those units. Um, if they do fail, there are, they no longer make whatever parts needed. So we will have to get a whole new unit. So this is why we've kind of ranked this at top priority because otherwise we run the risk of having the facility have to shut down. So downtown revitalization, we've heard from council several times that downtown is a priority for ARPA spending. And we've summarized some potential projects here. Um, there are streetscape improvements still needed throughout the Franklin Street corridor, adopt a block phase two projects as part of the Downtown Together and Revive Initiative, a request from the Downtown Partnership for Funding Clean Team, and a potential feasibility study for Rosemary Commons. The digital access category is a combination of about three hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the library's meeting room AV systems, which need um an overhaul for them to be able to operate in this um flexible remote environment we've been working on. So that has been actually quoted out and has um been estimated to cost about three hundred thousand dollars for that equipment. And then other funding that has been recommended in this area would be for digital access and literacy programs um and broadband access or subsidies for some of our public housing neighborhoods. And finally, there was an early idea to set aside some money for the community to decide on what projects the town would undertake. So we recommend that these projects or services, the initiatives that the town would actually perform to address interests from the community survey, reduce the reporting burden and truly test what a future participatory budgeting process could look like. So after receiving your feedback this evening, the next step is to return to council in June. At that meeting, we hope to accomplish three things. We would love to be able to uh think about considering a budget ordinance to actually allocate some funds for some of the town department projects so that we could actually begin work this summer. We would provide an update on the letter of intent submissions from community partners and receive your input on which of those projects or categories of projects are of the highest interest. And we would like to discuss the summer community partner application process. So the questions we'd like to ask council to help guide the conversation this evening are first and most important, do the funding allocations for each category match your interests? So this is really our priority focus for this evening. We want to make sure that those funding allocations and those were just recommendations that we put forward as one way to start thinking about how we'd like to allocate the dollars. We just want to make sure that that meets council's interests. And then, once we have a better understanding of that, we'd really like to know if we captured the projects that you're most interested in funding for each category. We have time to get this right. So once we hear feedback this evening, we can come back with additional projects or updated project recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy. And Sarah, I know she was very involved in this as well. Okay. Um, first clarifying questions and then we'll move into comments. I saw Jess and Amy and then Karen.
Yeah, I have two. Um, so on the Rosemary Commons feasibility study, um. I I'm just wondering, I I thought in the answers to questions that came through this afternoon or this morning that we talked about expanding that to be just for visioning for downtown or, you know, expanding it to go beyond Rosemary Commons. But then, when I heard you talk about it tonight, it sounded like it had changed back maybe, or I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that was a good point. No, we we did, and in the slide, it does actually say downtown strategic planning initiatives. It was originally recommended. One of the recommendations that came from council was to possibly consider looking at Rosemary Commons. So that's just one option, but anything tied to the larger strategic priorities for our planning initiatives um is, you know, what we would put forward in this category. And so that would be for council to discuss and let us know what's priority.
Okay, all right. So that, that's still, that's still in the broader. Okay, that's great. And um in terms of the Parks and Rec Possible Initiatives, I guess one of the things that I'm confused about is um that this, as far as I understand, the splash pad and the inclusive playground have long been on kind of the list of priorities um for Parks and Rec. But the inclusive playground, I thought that the inclusive playground included a splash pad. And so I'm wondering if um if take, you know, if we didn't do, if we did them separately, or I mean, I don't think we're trying to ask for two splash pads is what I'm saying. So I'm just wondering if there's um a way to, I guess, reduce the cost of the splash pad, of the inclusive playground, or make them into one initiative so that it's just not so expensive. And so it's not really too, I'm just wondering if there's a different way to calculate that out so that we're not saying we're doing like an inclusive playground at Cedar Falls with a splash pad, and then we're doing another splash pad like hypothetically at Homestead or something.
So I'm not familiar um with what is included in the um inclusive playground. I don't know, Maurice, if you have any additional information, but we can certainly, if not, get back to you on what that would look like.
So we use that as a real item when we do the third grade field trips. We have the real documentation. It does not include a splash pad. It is it is solely an inclusive playground for people with multiple abilities. Um, over at Cedar Falls was the plan and the design, but it it didn't have a splash pad component at all.
Or maybe there's something, there's some like water pump, there's something in it that I thought had something to do with water, but I could be just totally wrong. That's fine. But I I thought there was, there seemed to be overlap in what they were providing.
That wasn't the original intention. I don't know, I don't think that's changed, but that wasn't the original plan for the inclusive playground.
Got it. Okay. Well, then maybe, well, right. So maybe my question is, can we just confirm that the current plan that they're totally separate? And then um I guess my next question is, is it possible to get both of them? I mean, one of the things that we've talked about at length is that the splash pad isn't, is a really inclusive um amenity. It's something that people of all different abilities can use. Um, so I'm just wondering if there's a way, I know that they're kind of being talked about for due to two different locations, but I'm just wondering if it's possible to meet both goals without um I don't know, without you know, and still do it well.
We can certainly come back with information. We can, yeah.
Yeah, we can ask, we can ask um the folks in Parks and Rec about that and get
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thanks.
I'm sorry, I forgot. I think it was me.
Amy and Karen.
No, wait, you're just doing questions now, not comments?
Clarifying questions.
Okay. Um, I haven't, do we know what the county's broadband plan is yet? Have they committed to anything or voted?
I'm not sure what their plan is. I know they they have talked about utilizing upwards of ten million dollars to to help fund their efforts, but I don't know any details about the plan.
Thank you.
It selected a vendor.
Yeah, they have.
So there there must be a plan then.
I think so. They have a certain number of houses. Yeah, they've, there's a plan.
Okay.
Is that it? Okay. Karen? And Puppy?
Um, I was just, um, I don't know if we know this yet. I know the deadline is Friday, but I was um. Concerned about the possibility of, I know a lot of nonprofits, um, fiscal year goes from July first to June thirtieth. And whether they may be hoping that we make a decision on the nonprofit funding. This year, not waiting till the fall if they're relying on, and I know it's one-time funding, so it may not. Impact them in that way, but I know it's hard for nonprofits to plan not knowing kind of what funding they're gonna be getting for the year. Is there any way we can? Address the nonprofit portion of this um. Before the end of the year, this, the session, or is that just not realistic and not needed?
Well, I think the concern would be that we did not require organizations to submit a letter of intent. And so since we haven't opened up. An application process. Um, it was really, yeah, I think we just, you know, we had, we were just not ready to get to that point. Yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize there was another.
There's another, yeah, there's an actual, this was really just to get a sense, so council had a better understanding of what the. Needs would look like, so you'd have a little bit more comfort in determining these funding levels.
Um, okay, then, never mind.
And we do anticipate that the the funding. Because it is one-time funding would be used for one-time initiatives or projects and not necessarily ongoing operational costs, right? I think that was the 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 intent behind it.
Michael?
Yeah, in in terms of the affordable housing, uh, you know, I, you know, I understand the lack of specificity. One of the things I I would really like to see is sort of what our total. Available funding for affordable housing projects is because, you know, we may use ARPA, we've got, you know, we've got a second. Tranche of the Affordable Bond that may be issued sometime in the next few months. There's some money in the Affordable Housing Reserve. So I'd like to be able to look at the totality of our resources. And I don't know where we are when we did the, you know, when we first. Approved the bond, we had a list. It wasn't an approved list, but it was kind of a wish list from both the town. And our affordable housing partners as to, you know, what they wanted to do and that sort of informed. You know, that that ten million was about the right number. And if we could perhaps get, you know, our affordable housing partners to submit another wish list or something. So we could really be more intentional if we're going to allocate money for affordable housing. You know, it would help to know what the needs are, what, not so much the needs, the needs are big. But what the realistic pipeline of projects might be, because I don't think. I certainly don't know what that is. I know we've done a really good job of whittling away the pride, you know, the. Sort of wish list that we had in twenty seventeen, and so I think now, you know, we need to recalibrate.
Get that. Any other clarifying questions? I've got a couple of, all right. On the Parks and Rec list, um, I keep asking about the East Morgan Creek Greenway project. Can we get? Instead of having the whole project cost up there, and I'm just reminding everybody, we were awarded from the MPO, the West Morgan Creek Greenway. Funding, the East Morgan Creek Greenway, while a wonderful project, is only a thirty percent design right now. Can we get the cost? Instead of the cost of the project, can we have broken out what the cost to finish the design would be? So that that's a more realistic, in my mind, option versus trying to spend four point three million. I think that's the original cost is. To get it designed so that it's shovel-ready for future federal or MPO funding again. But to spend the money to get it designed, because we've really benefited from having that go. And then Sarah, I want to double check, aren't I correct? And when you put out a survey request, weren't over half of them for pickleball?
Um, not, not quite half.
A lot, and so I had not seen that on the list anywhere from folks saying that they were interested in more pickleball. Um, as a recommendation, as something we wanted to do for Parks and Rec.
Yeah, that's a a good, good memory. So we've had about five hundred and twenty people respond to the survey and about a hundred and fifty of them was a very coordinated effort from Chapel Hill Pickleball. And one thing that we've learned very recently, like this morning, um, is that the Chapel Hill Pickleball will be submitting a letter of intent. Um, so we, since we didn't have any cost information or specifics about what their desires specifically are. We didn't have that for tonight, but it would certainly be in in the June meeting for inclusion there. So tonight, we represented what the Parks and Recreation Department um has asked for out of their wish list. And then when we get more particulars about pickleball, um, that'll be included in June.
Well, I'm so, I'm I'm intrigued to learn that you learned this morning, because I didn't learn until tonight.
Well, uh, I, yeah, I didn't, I haven't actually seen their letter of intent yet.
I was told by my counterpart that um they were submitting.
Yeah, well, yeah, uh, I I kind of got the heads up to the heads up, if you will.
Need to get on that list. There we go. Paris, you had a question?
Yeah, I think I've asked, you know, about releasing the teen center. Um, on the Parks and Rec priority list. Um, I know that the current space that our teens are in. Um, they really faced a lot of um challenges during COVID. Because of the lack of ventilation in that space. And I think it's really important that we are investing. Um, in our youth in that way, ensuring that they have space to um be able to gather and do the things that they need to do. And I know, I think I've elevated also that that space. Is not adequate for their needs right now. And so would really like to um get a sense of. Where, what, you know, um, what kind of funding needs to take place. I know that they've um. Advocated not giving up their current space, but being able to change it into. You know, an art studio or something like that. And so, um, is it possible to, you know, get those numbers? So we have a clear idea of what that funding would be like to address the ventilation. Um, to transform the space into that art studio, music studio, whatever. And also what those numbers would be for another space for um teens for Parks and Rec.
I just want to remind council that um, one of the topics on the June first work session is a deeper dive into all Parks and Rec issues. So that we can hear um. What what's going on now, what we have, what those maintenance needs are, what the requests have been. I do know the Parks and Rec Commission's meeting next week, I think on Tuesday. To come forward their list to us as well. So um, we'll have a chance to hear back from some of this information before we make final budget decisions or. Any ARPA decisions at that point in time, but we wanted to get a deeper into all those issues so you could see what was going on with that. Any clarifying questions? All right, back to comments then. Are you liking the split? Are you? I'm trying to think how we frame these, Maurice, so that people can give you, people, council members can give you um feedback on. I think it's going to be too hard to give you feedback on each item on each list, so if you like this general tendency or that maybe we could. Respond in writing maybe a little later for the individual items on there, but if you guys can do it in a succinct manner, we can try. We'll start with Amy.
All right, lightning round. Um, I I think in general, the allocations match the interests. Um, that doesn't mean that if. You know, two hundred and fifty thousand shifted from one pot to another for a good reason, that I would be opposed to that. But but I think in in broad brushstrokes, um, I think this is good. Um, I'm just wondering if we even need the five hundred thousand for digital access. I understand the library project is one thing, but. Um, you know, Chapel Hill residents are county residents also, and a lot of times the county treats us like, you know, you. We don't, we don't need to pay for you, y'all pay for yourself, but we should benefit from county programs as well. So, for instance, if our public housing needs broadband, um, I think it's fair to ask the county for that. Um, uh, in terms of the Parks and Rec facilities. I think the numbers on the inclusive playground and the splash pad look really high to me. I think that that's um. I agree with earlier comments that maybe there's a way to put those two things together. Um, and again, I think those, I think those numbers look high, but I would like to see them happen. I think a splash pad especially. Would benefit um, a large segment of the population. It would be for kids, it would be for small families. It helps folks who can't join a pool, go cool off in the summer. Um, it would be, they are pretty naturally inclusive, a little inclusive playground next to it would be good. So I I think it just would benefit a broad group of people. And in terms of ARPA funds helping us support resilience, um, you know, one of the things we saw during COVID was this. Was a demand for that kind of public outdoor safer space, so. Um, I would be supportive of those, but maybe if we can get a little bit better idea of what the money is for. Um, I think the turf fields need to happen. Um, there's just some discussion about whether, how we pay for them. I don't know that that all needs to come out of ARPA money if we've got the um. If we've got the the teams willing to help pony up some of the money in the beginning. Now, I know that on the backs. We we just need to get this system straight, right? If we're going to pay for it all upfront and collect fees, we need to be putting those fees aside to redo the. The turf field, well, eight years down the road, we know it's going to happen, so um. Or we can get money upfront now and then not recoup those fees, but we just need to figure that one out. Parks and Greenways had a long discussion about the Morgan Creek East project that I'm sure they'd be happy to share with you. Um, it's a key connector from Carboro. It really pulls the whole southern part of the community together into a system. So you could go from Carboro up to University Place um on a safe, on a safe bikeway. So it doesn't all have to happen upfront, the mayor's suggestion of at least funding the design work. Um, and I think there are some small parts of it. That would help connect um the Morgan Creek Trail up into the Morgan Creek neighborhood. So it wouldn't be connected all the way, but if that one little missing piece of connectivity could make a big difference in the area. So if you could talk to Parks and Rec a little bit about how that could break down, that would be great. Um, and the one million for downtown, I'd like to see that um, a substantial investment in that Roseberry Commons lot. I also really want us to do a comprehensive planning process for downtown. Um, I saw some discussion about how that would be folded into SOM's LUMO work. I'm not sure that that's the place that it needs to go. I think it really needs to be its own effort. Um, I think money invested in that now is we're going to take over Franklin Street. Um, as we're looking at bike ped connections, as we're doing economic development, as we're trying to figure out parking. We just have so much activity there. I think that needs to be its own thing and not just a little appendage to some LUMO work. Uh, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Great, that was very succinct. We got Michael. Followed by Jess, okay?
Yeah, I think, I'm, you know, I think generally, you know, and again, as Amy said, I'm sure, you know, this fine tuning, things can move around a bit, but I think generally it looks good. Uh, one thing I would like to see though, you know, I think we've talked about this a while back is, you know, ARPA is supposed to be. Ultimately, it's, you know, it's, it's not an ATM. It's meant to uh, you know, mitigate the impacts of COVID and all those things. So at the very least. As we move forward and as we take this out to the public, I'd really like to see us develop some kind of a narrative. As how this really relates to COVID mitigating the impacts of COVID, helping our community recover. As opposed to, you know, we've got a bunch of budget holes and we're gonna use this money to fill them. So I think that's important. I want to second what Paris said about the teen center. Uh, when I chaired the Town Properties Task Force, I got my first look at the teen center and I was horrified, literally horrified. Uh, and somehow it comes up and then it disappears again and it comes up. And just as quickly it disappears again, and I think this is a. A real opportunity to do something there. I I don't expect that in ten years, that will be the permanent home for. Either a teen center or some nexus of programs oriented to teens and maybe pre-adolescents. But even in the interim, that place is just an embarrassment to this town and we need to do something about it and. You know, so I really think that that, I don't know which bucket it goes in, I don't much care, but something needs to happen with that. Uh, but otherwise, you know, and as I said earlier. You know, before, you know, I'd like to see a more. Defined relationship between. Specific projects or tentative projects for affordable housing, the relationship between affordable housing and homelessness. Uh, and, you know, the use of these funds in, and in the broader context of bond funds, affordable. Housing reserve and whatever. Uh, but otherwise, I think, you know, you're certainly on the right track.
Do you want to comment on splash pad or inclusive playground or any of that?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a big fan of the inclusive playground. Uh, I think that, you know, and if the, if those numbers hold, and I don't know if they will. Uh, and I don't know, you know, I agree with Amy, if we can get money from someplace else, yes. Uh, but um, if those numbers were to hold up as they are, I mean, that would kind of suck up the rest of the um. You know, that would basically suck up the amounts of money for the, you know, that park bucket. Uh, but, and if there's ways of combining them to make it, you know, a better use of resources, of course, I'm all for that.
All right, Jess and then Ty and then Adam?
Um, yeah, I I would like to. Understand more about the turf fields and if there's a way to get the soccer clubs to. To pitch in on that, just to understand the numbers a little better or maybe get more accurate numbers. Um. I think, um, I I feel really strongly that we. Maybe just, um, I, well, I guess overall, sorry, I'll I'll start big picture. I think this is, this makes sense to me. Um, generally, and yes, if things moved around a little bit, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I think overall, I think it's a really good first. Effort at bringing something forward. Um. I do feel like the downtown, um. The downtown initiative money should really be about um. Bringing together um, kind of, you know, taking over Franklin Street, figuring out what what that means. Putting that together with an open space initiative along with just the overall visioning for downtown and um, so. I would rather keep that more general than having it be dedicated to the one piece of that. Um. I think, um, in terms of the teen center. I agree that the teen center was not in good shape when we saw it a few years ago. I also would just like to remind that um. That. The library staff went and talked to teens when we brought up a teen center a while ago and they said. Um, all, you know. Teens from all over the community said they didn't really want like a new teen center or a big teen center. They really. Um, that actually wasn't the interest. So if that's changed, I think that's fine. But I think based on the information when we were last talking about the teen center, we heard from. Stakeholders themselves that that wasn't really the interest, but I would say in the interim, making sure that the. You know, under the post office is a reasonable space. I think it's, um, you know, totally makes sense. I just think we should kind of figure out what the long-term goal is before we invest a lot of money in something that we may not really. You know, want to do there or anywhere, I don't know. Um. So I think that one, I would just want to understand more what we're trying to accomplish in the long term before figuring out what the short-term. Fix looks like, but I agree that teen center is not okay. Um, and I continue to be um, to be very supportive of the splash pad. I think, you know, over eight hundred people came last year and told us that was something really important to them. Um, the previous council had indicated support for that and I think. Um. I do think, I I would like to see if we can. Do something where we integrate an inclusive aspect, you know, an inclusive element. Um, beyond the splash pad, which is inclusive in itself, but I think it's something really important. I think it's something. That to me aligns very well with recovering from. The pandemic in that it gives people something to do. Outside in the summer, which clearly is going to be an ongoing thing, since we're apparently not done with the, with the pandemic to date. So, um, I I think that's a really important initiative, but I think if there's a way to get both or to. Um, to combine those two concepts in a, in a really high-quality way, not in a. Like, we're just trying to stuff everything into one initiative way, then I think that would be great. Um. And that's it.
Okay, I forgot to ask both of you about the Morgan Creek Greenway.
Um. I. I honestly, like, all I've heard is that it's an important connector. That's what I've heard before. I just don't understand enough. About it beyond that, but I mean, if it's an important connector for our network, then I think it's a good thing. Um. But I just don't, I I, I'm sorry, I just don't know enough about it, so I'd have to learn more before we vote, I guess.
Okay.
Well, Pam, yeah, I I, in general agreement with your approach. I mean, we don't have four million dollars up or or otherwise to do the whole thing, so, I mean, that's. That's, that's, that's a nice thing to talk about, but it's not realistic. Uh, nor could, and it's not clear that we could ever get it done by the deadline anyway, but I think. You know, put, investing to make it shovel-ready makes a ton of sense and, you know, it looks like for the next couple of years. You know, there may be some money floating around that we can grab on to. And, you know, it looks like for the next couple of years, you know, there may be some money floating around that we can grab on to, whether it's the MPO or something else. So I think investing in the planning, getting it, you know, reasonably close to shovel ready, I think makes a ton of sense.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. Was Adam, no, Ty then Adam? Okay. Yeah. Ty then Adam, then Paris.
Gotcha. Thank you. So partner funding looks, I like the approach and the LOIs. I'm glad that we did something to get that going. I think some of the other communities have already begun their process as it relates to community partners. And I know there was a lot of anticipation and confusion from some of our local nonprofits on that. So I'm glad we moved forward on that. The, on the affordable housing and homelessness initiatives bucket, I agree with Michael about going and getting some sort of updated, realistic wishlist, whatever we want to call it, from our providers to get some more specific projects that are kind of in the pipeline for that. I definitely want to raise the utility assistance as well. I know that is one of the biggest impacts, disproportionate impacts of COVID, now with the lift on the moratoriums and stuff. And I don't know if we can kind of collaborate with AWASA more on that. I think other than, as far as I'm aware, other than like the, I don't even know what they call it, the Care to Share program that they do. They aren't offering any other kind of assistance or relief to utility payers, customers that were impacted by the pandemic. So I think that's a, a big one. On the Parks and Rec, I think focusing on kind of current maintenance needs and stuff is really important. So I would definitely want the Cedar Falls Artificial Turf Project. But also recognizing that we have some entities that want to chip in for that. So getting some numbers on that would be helpful. I know we don't really have to make a decision on this until the fall at least. So that gives us some time there. I do really like the adaptive playground and, you know, Amy and Jess's idea about bringing that together with the splash pad. My understanding from the staff answers to our questions was the feasibility study that, you know, the previous council wanted to move forward on. We're not getting those results until, I think, like early next fiscal year, I think it was. So if it is possible, we could include kind of the adaptive playground component within that feasibility study and have that be brought back to us about, you know, what those options would look like. I think that'd be a, a good route forward. Bike and Ped, yeah, I think on the Morgan Creek, what Pam was saying about investing to get that shovel ready makes a, a lot of sense. And the HVAC units at the Aquatic Center, I can't swim, so I'm not a user of that facility. But, you know, definitely sounds like a priority project to me. Oh, and then downtown, I think that was the, I don't know, two more things. Downtown. The, if the, what was it? What did we call it? Planning, strategic planning initiatives, if that includes the downtown master plan that I think the partnership has been talking about for years and years, has never had the funding to do. And that includes the comprehensive planning for downtown. I'm very supportive of that. And digital access, I think I would need some more information about the county's plan and how that would support or interact with that before I kind of make any call on that bucket. And I think that was all the buckets.
Thank you. Adam, then Paris, then Karen.
I think overall, okay, I mean, you know, this is $10 million and you can move money here and there with this. I'm very supportive of the, you know, the system to get our nonprofits onboard and getting them some funding. So I think that's good. Obviously, I mean, I say it every budget time, but the skate park, the splash pad, the adaptive playground, don't forget the skate park. It's, you know, over a thousand signatures on a petition. We've been talking about in every report for over a decade renovating it. You know, huge use, especially during COVID outside, you know, not to take away, I love the, you know, adaptive playground and the splash pad and the pickleball. But, you know, and these are all things, I think, that we don't need a whole lot of planning for, except probably the skate park. We need to, you know, we don't have something ready, but the adaptive playground, we actually have a drawing and stuff for Cedar Falls and, you know, we can be ready to do that. The splash pad, we're spending, you know, we're in the midst of spending a lot of time on it. The pickleball, I think is, you know, we have the, we know where we want to locate it and the courts and stuff. So, I mean, I think we, overall, I will say this. I think in addition to making sure that the, our nonprofits are, you know, we have a system in place that we can, you know, distribute some of this money. We're going to need to be able to point to something that we did. And I would hate to spend all the money and say, well, we, you know, we replaced those, the, which I support, replacing the turf at Cedar Falls. And that's what you did with the ARPA money, you know? I mean, it's a good thing, don't get me wrong, but, you know, and we need to do it. It brings in over a hundred thousand dollars of money every year. And my understanding, actually from talking with you, Maurice, is that we, that the traveling teams are, are not at this point interested in ponying up all the money upfront, I think. Cause, you know, last time we talked and that could have changed, but.
We're re-engaging them on that, but we did talk to them back in March about that possibility and, and did not get a, a lot of takers.
Yeah. So we're, but what we have to keep in mind, like Amy was saying, you know, it's a revenue generator for us. I mean, we're going to get a hundred thousand dollars or more every year from the rental fees. So we, you know, how we have to do that. I mean, I think the, so, but overall, I think we need to be able to, whenever we're done with this process, I would love to be able to point to a few things. In addition to, you know, this, what we've taken care of and said, you know, we have this big chunk of money from the federal government and we did X, Y, Z. And people can see that. So I, that's my general thought. Skate park, skate park. The other thing is the construction costs are probably going through the roof too, is for, on these projects. So we're going to have to reevaluate that. So that's a, that's a, going to be a bummer, I think, with some of these things. And then the final thing is, you asked about the Morgan Creek plan. I think I totally agree, planning for it, absolutely. But I will say, you know, I think we can maybe investigate doing some lower cost natural surface connections over there that costs a fraction of any sort of paved connection and maybe help a little bit with our connectivity and don't cost a whole lot. Those are my.
Right. And design work would show us where we could do some natural type stuff too. Okay. I think it was Paris then Karen. And then Camille, are you, okay, there we go.
Great. Thank you. So I am good with the bucket allocations. I feel that they are definitely reflective of what our community, as well as council, has prioritized. I would like to say that there need to be, needs to be a clear understanding on what is going to take, what it's going to take to help us meet our goals. Um, I really want all of these allocations to really be connected to a goal that we're trying to achieve. And I think that will also make it clear that we're also going to be trying to connect those goals with what the ARPA funding was intended for. I don't want us to lose sight of that. And I think our community has that expectation. I'll start with Parks and Rec. I am for the Cedar Falls as well. And again, we have partners. That's wonderful. I will say that the teen center is important. I've heard things differently than maybe what has been surveyed before. I think also in that survey, you know, teens were just wanting to be welcomed to our downtown and that's the floor for me. I, I think our teens should be asking for the world. And we as a community need to make sure that our teens are welcomed. And one way that we can ensure that we are showing them that they're welcome is that we're investing in that space. And I've heard an excitement around possibly revamping that space and making it into a studio that, you know, teens are really into music and art and all kinds of stuff. And so I sit on Parks and Rec and those are the things that I've heard most recently. And I would really like for us to move forward with that. And so would like to, when we come back, see some, you know, potential numbers attached to what that looks like for ARPA allocations that'll address ventilation and make sure it's a safe space and all of that. The A.D. Clark Pool at Hargraves, I know that there are some maintenance things going on there. I know one of the reasons we don't have the kiddie pool working is because it was never fixed. I don't know if there's a missing part. I don't know, but I know the main pool itself has some things. And I want to make sure that if there's a gap in the budget to address that, that it is being addressed with ARPA funding. Because that's the only outdoor pool that we have. And during the time of COVID, it was probably a very safe option that our community members were able to benefit from. Number four for Parks and Rec for me, really down with the inclusive part, know that we already have a plan for that. It may need to be tweaked here and there or whatever. But I don't want to fold, automatically fold the splash pad into that. I think until we have a clear understanding of the overall cost with the splash pad, that I don't want to attach it to the inclusive playground. The splash pad needs to continue going through the process that we put forward. We've already allocated 15K for the feasibility study to see what those, the initial cost of just building it is, as well as ongoing maintenance and cost of that. And so I don't want to just fold them into, I get council members' thought process about it. But because of costs, I want to make sure that we're not inflating the cost of the inclusive park in that way with the addition of the splash pad. Let's go to affordable housing. I would really like to get something back from our public housing to see where there are funding gaps there to address the needs of our public housing community members. That housing was built in late seventies, eighties. And would love to see what those needs are that our regular budget isn't meeting, that we can potentially meet some of those gaps. And also would love that updated wishlist from our community partners around affordable housing as well. Utility assistance. Thank you, Councilmember Wen. I think it would be great to have a collaboration possibly with AWASA, but their program right now is just a volunteer program that people can volunteer to put into. And it's not very robust. And we know that potentially with water increase, community members are going to need more assistance with that. And that is directly how, you know, these ARPA funds were intended to be spent. Uh, thank you, Mayor Heminger for the Morgan Creek. I think that makes absolute sense. So thumbs up there for me around that. Got to take care of the Homestead Aquatics for the building infrastructure needs. So that's a thumbs up for me. Would also be interested in seeing where the broadband would be for the county and what they're planning to do. But really love the idea of broadband for our public housing community members. And thumbs up with the community-based project. So, thank you. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Karen, then Camille.
Alrighty, I'll try to run through this quickly. Let's see, for the affordable housing, I mean, overall, I think, you know, as everyone has said, I think the buckets are pretty in the right ballpark, right neighborhood, whatever the euphemism is. For our, the parks funding, I like new things. And there's new things we've talked about for a long time, especially that inclusive playground. I know I've been hearing about it for years and years. But I do feel like it is irresponsible for us and kind of embarrassing as a town to have existing resources and, uh, equipment and parks that we're not taking care of. So I have to say, I'm in support of fixing what we have before we do new things, including the skate park. I've been hearing about the skate park for a long time too. I've gotten some emails from little skate punks. And so I, I do think, you know, I think we're, I may be wrong. I think we're caught up on our tennis courts now. I know that was just so bad for a while. And so I really want us to be proud of all of our, all of our parks and playgrounds. And, and so I just want them to be in good usable shape, including the Homestead Fields. And then from there, if we can, you know, again, I don't know what the costs are, if there are economies of scale for the inclusive playground splash pad combo, that's great. I think we just need more information. I think, I agree, I don't want one to hold up the other. So I just think we need more cost information and plans to be able to assess what, what comes first, what order. For downtown, I'm a little bit confused. I feel like we're talking about a bunch of different things and I'm not completely sure what they all are. Rosemary Commons seems like a great idea. I'm not really clear kind of how much we're talking about investing and how long we envision that being in place. So I would like more information about kind of what, what kind of investment that would need. And, I forget what else I was going to say about downtown, so I'll skip that for the moment. For, oh, one other thing I was going to say about the parks, I believe, but I could be wrong. Maurice, please correct me. I think the playgrounds in our public housing neighborhoods are kind of managed by Parks and Rec.
They, I mean, they provide support on occasion as well to our maintenance staff that we have in place too.
So I'd like, as part of that, kind of fixing up our existing parks and playgrounds, I would like our public housing playgrounds assessed as well, whether that comes out of housing funds or parks funds, I'm not sure. But I think.
For sure.
Okay. I think that's really.
We just, we just did celebrating successes on the upgrades to all those playgrounds.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a number of playgrounds that have been upgraded. Not all of them, I believe, but a number of them have been. But we can provide that update to you.
That'd be great. Thank you. The Aquatic Center obviously needs, needs, there's HVAC replaced. And I'm agree on the Morgan Creek design. I think that's a good plan for the affordable housing. Agree with the request for updated information and utility assistance. And I think we can also consider some of the partnership debt and homelessness requests, probably in that, like rapid rehousing funding could certainly be covered there as well. So I'd like to consider that. And trying to think of something else about downtown, but anyway, I'm good.
Thank you, Camille.
Thanks. Yes. Up here, affordable housing and homelessness initiatives. Okay, I will echo that I would like to see the wishlist there, but I like this amount. I am concerned about the public housing, the roadways there. I'm going to keep lifting that up because I go every week to one in particular and there are new potholes that reappear after they've been patched. There's a beautiful mural out there. But that mural does not help when someone's car has been damaged and they can't get to and fro. Whether the, where they're trying to get to is work or school or get food. So I am concerned about that and I would like to, I would like to hear how we're doing in the public housing communities. Okay, then I'll try to, the Parks and Recreation, absolutely agree. At the urging of someone, I went and checked out the Cedar Falls turf for myself, walked out there. It is, it, there's no doubt that it needs to be resurfaced. So I absolutely support that. I see the skate park on here. I see the adaptive playground. Well, skate park, we have that already. So that's one thing that has been said. We've got two new things. So two things that are in great need of repair, two new things. I know that the adaptive playground, there was a design that was done in 2018. Or at least that was the last time it was visited. So that has existed. I don't think that the skate park discussion has been around that long. Or at least that was the last time it was visited. Um, so that has existed. I don't think that the skate park discussion has been around that long. Um, I'm not in favor of combining the two just yet. Um, and I'm curious that fit the feasible feasibility study that. Um, Ty suggested that we do with the, for this um adaptive playground. Is that part of that fifteen thousand that we're talking about? Is that what you were meaning, Ty, to, as we look at that feasibility study?
Yeah, well, I was saying that, well, I'm pretty sure of this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Maurice. We had. Uh, approved the feasibility study to go forward at, and the cost was projected to be fifteen thousand. I was saying. Um, to increase the scope to include the adaptive playground component. Um, and see how that could be worked into it and kind of bring back what the possibilities would look like.
And you were talking about the feasibility study for the splash pad. And then including the adaptive playground, if there's a way to try to include that in there and the feasibility efforts there. So just wanted to clarify, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm trying to clarify, okay. Um. The, we already have a design for the adaptive playground. We have needs, the skate park. Um, I talked with someone who used to work with Parks and Rec, and I'm sorry, I have not had a chance to go look at that space. But it um, from folks on here and from this person who used to be in Parks and Rec, it does need attention. So I would not feel good about um investing in something new when we have repairs that need to be made. I have to echo what council. What Mayor Pro Tem, I'm gonna get that title right, Mayor Pro Tem uh statement.
I'm Karen.
I'm gonna repeat what Karen said. Um, that uh. It, we do need to attend to what we have. It doesn't make sense to invest in something new. When we can't afford to maintain what we already have. Um, and let's see, I'm gonna move on quickly. Uh, I really appreciate the direction, the suggestion that the mayor made about. Let's get a design so that we know what we're working with so that we can move forward. And um, here's something else that is supporting Parks and Rec. That is absolutely a necessity and that is the HVAC units. If we need it, we need it, we need to do that. But I do want to raise up that that is three and a half million dollars that we are saying. Let's support Parks and Rec. So it's not like we're not trying to. Um. And downtown revitalization, I'm gonna lean on the rest of you and I'm gonna, let's go, I don't want to add anything to it. Then the digital access. Um, yes, we want to see what the county is doing, but um. I want to make sure that our community really is um in the twenty-first century. I'm really concerned about where our town staff is. And I want to make sure that the resources that we provide to those who use the library. As their access to um, to the world, that they really have it. So. Um, and I do want to make sure that our public housing uh residents have access to um. Broadband, so if we can look at that, I'm very concerned. I have a mentee who lives in public housing who um struggled and. And she has a younger brother who's in school. And if you can just imagine how that is. Um, it's, it's, I'm beyond that stage of having a child who's going through that. Um, having two, having more. Uh, there are some people who are really struggling and we need to make sure. More than, we have great spaces to walk outside. They are not perfect. And um, I'm gonna come back to that, the outdoor spaces, but we have to absolutely make sure that we equip our youth. With the tools so that they can succeed. And to that end, uh, the teen center. There's a short span for teens to be teens. And so I suspect those that were polled before who didn't want it. Are now long gone and they're adults and we've got new teens and we're gonna continue to have that. Um, and we all know that teens don't make the best decisions um for themselves. So uh, they're the same group who say, I don't need to sleep and I don't need to, you know, I don't need to wash, I don't need to bathe. What? No. Um, they need new space. I have not seen it, but just to hear from the folks here, they absolutely need it. And then back to something that Adam said, which I really like, which is the um. The Morgan Creek Trails, um, that design uh that we look at, yes, let's look at what we can do naturally. So it won't be out of this pot of money, I suspect, but I do like that idea of, let's see how we can do this gradually. Um, to make those connections. We, all of us want this connection, this connectivity to actually happen. And I do like that idea of, it doesn't all have to be paved at once. Um, let's see what can be natural. Okay, so that is in the community-based projects. I like um that. And that's it. Thank you.
Hey, Amy wanted to throw in a comment about climate actions, or?
Yeah, just very quickly, um, the one thing I don't see in this plan is things about climate. So I know some of them we can relate, but um I really would like to. You know, as you're looking at this again, see where we can do projects that relate to that. Um, or that are gonna forward that mission for us. That should be, that's our number one council priority. Um, and again, I'm just, I'm not seeing it here. And some of it maybe we're not telling the story of it. And that's one thing, but I think we're also not really investing here. So um, just to keep that in mind as you move forward.
Get my comments here, Michael?
Yeah, just very quick, I, I forgot to mention and I'm glad Paris did. So I just wanna second what Paris said about. Looking at opportunities to invest in our public housing communities. I mean, some of them are pretty sad shape. And again, you know, we struggled because the HUD money for that kind of capital isn't there. That's why we're doing the Rad Project at Trinity. So if we can make some investments, you know, I don't know all of our. Communities, but the ones I've seen could use some help. And I think that, you know, again, ARPA money seems to me to be a really great source. To, to do some renovations, refurbishing, upgrades, not just on roads, but you know, in the housing units themselves.
Okay, um, I thought Scott had negotiated broadband and internet connections for public housing with PTT and Google for us. Is that not true? Now we got internet, do we not get broadband? Or high-speed fiber?
Sure, we'd have to, we'd have to look into that.
I, I'm pretty sure he did, but okay. And I'm sorry, it's reminiscent when I used to petition council before I was even on boards. I came forward to ask for internet via utility and public housing units that I thought it should be included as part of the utility package. And they looked at me funny, but um, they did it. So that was kind of cool. Um, you're taking me way back. And Ty, I've taught many swimming lessons. I'm happy to have you come over and we will. Get you swimming so that you can swim at the Aquatic Center. It's a great facility. So, there we go. Um. I like the way the buckets are distributed as well. I think you've heard overall that. Um, and we know that something might move a little bit back and forth, but I think you've captured some interest really well there. Um, I'm hearing the information about the teen center. I would love for you. That are newer to meet with Susan Brown and her team to hear what they heard. And um, you do have an opportunity with an MSC building to create some space there as well in a new building. And I know Carver's new building is also going to have a teen area. But we were fascinated with what we heard from the teens, just to let you know. And I, I go to the teen center every year to talk with the teen. Um, the youth council and um, they like to show me the stuff that they're doing in there too. So I think there's, there's lots of different opportunities, but we do need to pay attention. Um, I'm glad to hear you all say about the planning for the Morgan Creek Greenway. I think that's a helpful thing for our community to do. Um, I want to do, I, I agree, we need to invest in what we already have, but I also want to do something new. As Adam was saying, to share with the community that we've got something new that we invested in to, you know, with our, with our ARPA monies. And, but we need to see the numbers. We need to see what the feasibility studies show. We need to see what. Other opportunities there may be from the community. I like the community spending idea. Downtown, I think that's gonna ebb and flow depending on what comes forward with um what we need to do. We are still working with downtown together. As far as coming up with ideas and plans. Um, we just came up with the idea of a feasibility study for Rosemary Commons is like, you know, what now, what here? What could it be? And what is it, you know, how much would it cost to make it work to be something? I think it's great that we get to spend all kinds of money. This is one of those game shows, right? You have ten million dollars. Where would you like to put it? And I think it's a wonderful um thing for the community. I know we can have some lasting benefits out of it. Um, I'm happy to talk to the soccer clubs with you to see if we can stretch those dollars a little further as well. There's just some opportunities here to partner to do some things. Um. It's a great position to be in, so that's all I can say. But anyway, we're gonna have more discussions. We're not voting. You did see that the. Manager and Ms. Owen would like to know if there's some buckets they could actually get us to consider. Before we break in June, just so that they could move along on some of these things, but that doesn't mean we have to. It's just. A request, so we'll be talking about this again. So don't, don't stress out. You're not making decisions tonight. You're just giving input and feedback and you can continue to give that. Maurice and Amy and Sarah, was there anything you didn't hear that you needed to hear?
Yeah, I think this is very helpful. Thank you.
Yes, appreciate the conversation.
Okay, I took some notes, so we got that. Okay, we have one more item on the list, but I want to do a time check here because we've been sitting. Sarah, about how long do you think we're gonna need on this item that you're gonna share with us? I'm not Sarah Vina, sorry.
Um, I think our presentation is about twenty minutes.
Council, are you good? Yeah, I'm getting some wobbles here from folks. Okay, we're good. Let's, let's rock and roll, folks. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sarah Venus, Director of Affordable Housing and Community Connections. And I'm joined by Colleen Wilgar, our Planning Director, and Corey Lyles, also with the Planning Department for tonight's presentation. We also have on the line Judy Johnson, Emily Holt, and Nate Broman-Folks, who are also members. Of the project team that have worked on this effort. I want to start by providing some background on the topic of developing an expedited review process for affordable housing. This is an issue that planning and affordable housing teams have been working on for a number of years. But the receipt of a petition from four then council members in September of two thousand and twenty-one. Raised the issue to a higher priority. The petition acknowledged the town's struggle with rapidly escalating housing prices. And a scarcity of affordable housing units, especially for the lowest income households. And called on town staff to find ways to promote increased production of affordable and missing middle housing units in the town. Specifically, the petition asked staff to create an expedited application process for development applications. That include at least thirty percent affordable units that takes less than nine months. When staff updated the Housing Advisory Board on their proposed response to the council petition last November. The HAB recommended staff propose an expedited review process that would take less than six months. Later that month, town staff provided council with a response to the overall petition. Which included additional objectives related to missing middle and affordable housing. And in March, town staff updated council on their progress in exploring an expedited review process. Including identifying the town's interests, proposed research topics and methodology. And preliminary ideas for proposed solutions. We are presenting to you again this evening to update you. On the findings from our pilot programs and research and ask you to consider a number of potential solutions. That we have proposed. We look forward to your feedback and guidance on the development of this policy priority. Based on the ongoing feedback from affordable housing developers and local partners. In addition to lessons learned from our own town-initiated development projects. It is clear to us that our current process is having a negative impact on our ability to build. The inventory of affordable housing in Chapel Hill that's needed. Developing affordable housing has been prioritized in council's goals and in our team's affordable housing work plan. But as is, the development review process is a key factor that constrains our progress. We're missing out on funding opportunities, partnerships with experienced developers and project opportunities. All of which could help us get more units built every year. As a first step in our work to study and explore ways to streamline the development review process, we worked to identify the town's interests. Guiding uh this work, which are listed here. Uh, number one, to maximize the opportunities for low-income housing tax credits. This is one of the. Uh, best tools that we have available to leverage what is relatively limited funding for affordable housing. Also to reduce local barriers to entry and at-risk design investments for affordable housing developers. And expand the suite of strategies to address escalating housing prices and scarcity of affordable housing units. And finally, effectively involve and gather input from the community. Uh, during an expedited process, which we have done some, some of through the pilot process. As mentioned, we have made substantial progress uh since council members sent the petition last September. We are currently working to evaluate and gather feedback on potential solutions. So that we can move forward with drafting process changes for council review and action this fall. And now I will turn it over to Colleen uh to walk you through what staff has learned from our work to review and study. The development review process.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. Um, so we, we wanted to share trade-offs with you about our existing plan review. And moving forward, what potential solutions could look like. So we want you to keep in mind these three areas for completing the review process. The first that you see in gold. Is the speed of review. And that, make sure, that we want to make sure everything's reviewed in a timely and predictable manner. Um, and then the second piece in green is the complexity of the application. So the information that is. In front of all of the staff and decision-making bodies is the level of information necessary to make a decision at that point in time. And the third piece is community input. And the way it's set up currently is in traditional. Uh, meetings and, and there are a number of meetings that support community input and involvement. And we can make adjustments to some of these, but. As you see in the three-legged stool, if you get rid of one or adjust one, you'll have to probably adjust the other or you'll be off balance. So. Balancing these three areas is um a consideration and a goal for the potential solutions that we have for you to consider tonight. The staff review and the study topics that Sarah mentioned uh that we took. Over the last several months included a variety of things. The first was the pilot project where we looked at the existing projects in our development pipeline. And tried to compress our existing pro- process and move things through to get um the low-income housing tax credits. The second one was we looked at existing processes. What do we already have that's built into our ordinance or our. Regulations that could facilitate a new pathway for affordable housing. And the second, or the third, we looked at our neighbors to see what they're doing um and to learn from their uh. Their sort of approaches. The fourth was, we looked at uh engagement with affordable housing partners and providers like Sarah mentioned. To see what's working and what isn't working from their perspective. And we also looked at um. We interviewed developers and we'll share that feedback with you tonight. And we looked at potential candidates for future projects that could benefit from expedited review or some type of streamlined process. And the next series of slides that we'll cover, we'll sort of learn, we'll share what we learned. From the studies and the engagement that we conducted. But the takeaways that we want to talk about really are, what are the factors with the review? And there are, there are multiple factors and all of these will contribute again to the potential solutions that we'll present tonight. But the first is really, you know, there's limited staff capacity. And what that means is if we added staff to housing or to planning, that might be helpful. But we have forty different technical reviewers. So adding staff in one spot might not help. Because the, the level of complexity and the level of review needed is sort of town-wide. The number of meetings required, uh, that is also something that has become a timeline factor. It stretches out the time. There's limits on the agenda length. Uh, so affordable housing uh projects sometimes. Um, can't be scheduled as, as um accelerated as we would like. And the number of steps in the process, it is somewhat onerous. The council meeting cycle, we see changes there. People are sort of timing their applications. Right, based on budget season or uh council breaks, the holidays. And then the volume of plan review just in general. So if we are prioritizing affordable housing projects, what does that look like with other projects? Commercial or sort of non-residential projects and the complexity of plans, which we'll talk about too. So. The takeaways of sort of under. the takeaways of sort of understanding the limits, if we want to make meaningful change to the review timeline, to streamline it, we can't do that without doing one or more of the following. And these are sort of setting you up for the potential solutions that Corey will get into in a little bit. We could have fewer steps in the review process. That's pretty straightforward enough. We could consolidate the advisory board review. This is something that we tried to do with the Joint Advisory Board meeting in the spring, but I think we would, what we learned was that it seemed additive and not necessarily streamlining things. And we could also do less application detail. So what's happening a lot of times is there is less application detail upfront, but then more later on after council approves it, and we will get into that in a little bit. We could add more resources and capacity to staff and, and reviewing or even boards and council. And then we could extend the timeline for other types of projects. So if you're prioritizing affordable housing, then potentially you would be adding time to other projects, which is not recommended, but that's just the world that we live in. So we thought we should, we would share that with you. At this point in the presentation, we're about a third of the way in. And I just want to check with everyone if you have questions or comments or want to have a conversation. The next two-thirds is really sort of what the more takeaways are in the solutions. I hear, I see some nodding and some shaking of heads. Keep going. Okay, keep it moving. Okay. So the takeaways, these are the stages of review in blue on the left. For the concept plan, the intended value of this review stage is to give general design principles, talk about the suitability of the development, if it's relative to the, to the context of the neighborhood, what does the program look like, the site uses, and really the point is to make sure that it aligns with our community values. The staff review, the point of that and the value added is looking for compliance with regulations. If they're doing anything a little different, they need to make modifications. And again, we look at alignment with community values, which are also added and documented in our long-range plans. For advisory boards, the value added here is that they're looking at alignment for community values. And for council, we want to make sure that we're looking at the review in a holistic way with the primary governing body. And then for the final plans, the added value is to make sure again that we're complying with regulations after it's gone through that entitlement process with those conditions of approval. So you can see in our process that there are some duplication in the review with some overlapping points. And so that's one opportunity where we could streamline or we could move things around so that it happens simultaneously. So the challenges at each stage that we found and that we heard from developers and the different stakeholders that we interviewed was that for the concept plan, the purpose seemed a bit unclear at times, that it felt more of like a no-go, no-go situation. And so that definitely added to risk and the unpredictability of the process. For the staff piece, there is a high level of at-risk investment in the design and engineering that's required upfront because the complexity of the plans is increasing before they even get entitled. So that is also increasing the risk and reducing the affordability of the project in the long term. So they're taking those dollars and putting it into the entitlement process instead of the affordability or the quality of the project in the end. And other communities require less detailed design to secure entitlement. And so there's also flexibility on regulations must be approved by council in Chapel Hill. That's something that we heard was, was of risk for the developers. For the advisory boards, what we heard was they get a lot of competing feedback. And this creates a lot of risk because they don't know how to move forward. They're not really quite sure what they should choose to move forward before they get to council. And there's too much, again, too much design investment that by the time it gets to council, they, they can't really make any changes. And the final one was there's a limited understanding sort of writ large about the constraints of affordable housing projects. So I think when they're bringing, when applicants are bringing projects forward, there's not a clear understanding from the advisory boards of what exactly they're trying to wrangle with in front of them. That's different than sort of market rate projects. And finally, the feedback that we heard from developers and others for council was that predictability and removing uncertainty around the decision can be as valuable as the saving of time. So they were actually comfortable with a length of a process so long as they knew that length would stay. And they knew what they were being asked of upfront so that they could have a predictable outcome. So removing that risk by having clear expectations and documented expectations was just as valuable as saving time. And so now I will hand it over to Corey to go through the individual processes and the potential solutions.
All right. So keeping with this kind of overview of our process, we see it laid out in more detail here and we won't go through all the detail, but just to see how these steps add up to a process that if everything is going right for any type of development could take 10 months minimum. What we see more often is around 14 months. And that's without even counting the time that happens in between a concept plan review and the formal application submittals. So between the first two stages, we can't really have as much control over that time. So it's a lengthy process. We note that, you know, there are some loops in here where things might have to get caught going around in circles a little bit. We compare this to what we hear from our counterparts in Raleigh and Durham and where they've had success in affordable housing unit production. And we hear that a lot of the sites being put forward for affordable housing are already zoned for the project they want to do and perhaps using a density bonus to get all the way there. So they're not even needing to go through some of these early stages of review. They move more into the detailed construction drawings. So we can think more critically about what, what type of review is needed before we are ready to develop an affordable housing project. As we looked at those existing processes in our framework that are used in other contexts, one that really stood out to us was the light industrial conditional zoning district. This one was adopted in 2017 and it does apply specifically to properties in northwest Chapel Hill on Millhouse Road. So it's a very compressed process. We could think of, think of this perhaps as a pendulum swing and going all the way in another direction and then finding something that's more balanced in the middle. This process could take as little as four months. And the way it gets there is first by exempting projects from concept plan review when they're pursuing this zoning district. By having simpler planned submittals, we'll talk about that some more, but the focus is on a development envelope rather than design detail. When the project moves to advisory boards, only the planning commission reviews out of our advisory boards. And then council explicitly has the opportunity to take action on the same night as the hearing as written in the ordinance. Talking more about our advisory board review and how many participants there are. We, we map out our process from concept plan through final plans. We see that there are at least eight advisory board meetings on a project. More often nine when we now involve our stormwater board and possibly even more if projects have to go back for repeat reviews. And you see them laid out here. Our affordable housing providers are really sensitive to this, that this is the feedback we got, that this is build time on their projects where their consultants are spending time preparing for each meeting, presenting, debriefing, and then spending time waiting for their agenda item to come up at the meeting and they're, and they're getting billed for that. So it does add up is the feedback we heard. We did pilot that joint advisory board meeting for J Street and Trinity Court this spring. That meeting ended up actually needing to add on to the number of meetings with advisory boards because the boards then deliberated and made recommendation at their own individual meetings. The feedback we got from the participants of the advisory boards in that joint meeting, some found that it ran long with doing the two projects. And we're also sensitive to having an extra meeting. And staff was doing a lot of preparation for many meetings in a compressed period of time. So we're not sure about, we still see joint meetings as a tool, but we want to think more about how to improve it. And just noting when we talked with staff in Raleigh and Durham, that if projects do go through rezoning and including if they're affordable housing or otherwise, only the planning commission would be reviewing those projects. They do have advisory boards and commissions in Raleigh and Durham. And the focus there is more on policy guidance at a more general level, not project specific. We do recognize that advisory board meetings have been an important vehicle for public participation in our process, where people can speak at all these meetings. So if we are thinking about reshaping the advisory board review, we want to recognize that we'll need some other methods to collect feedback and do quality engagement with the public. And these are some solutions that staff in Raleigh and Durham said have become part of their process. And we also think we could work with our community connection staff and use their expertise to think about what works well in Chapel Hill. One area of takeaways, one more to touch on is the plan detail. So the complexity of applications we've mentioned. We're going to compare our application checklist for conditional zoning, which is what goes through the advisory board and council review, and then final plans, which comes after the entitlement and has the full detail. So there are a few things in a conditional zoning application that are specific to that stage of the process. And then there are a lot of things that, at least as identified in the checklist, are common elements between the two stages of review. The applicants are going through a lot to prepare these plans for submittal. And when we talk about the at-risk investment that affordable housing providers are concerned about, it's putting the money into design work and engineering work to create these plans. There are a few things that are not addressed until the final plan stage, which you see listed at bottom right there, but there is a lot of overlap. We can again look at our light industrial conditional zoning district process to compare the application review. They do go through final plans review after the council makes a decision, if they make an approval. There is a focus on this rezoning plan idea where you just look at the development envelope, the limits of land disturbance and of buildings and parking, and then define your access points and preservation areas. And that's what's being reviewed and considered for entitlement. There are a few things common to that conditional zoning and then the final plans related to streams, wetlands, and stormwater. And we recognize that those align well with what our community prioritizes. And then a lot of that other plan detail is not an investment required until you move into that final plan review. Again, we are not recommending going this far, but we could think about how to shift some things a little bit later in the process. So this covers the highlights of the information that we have gathered in order to form our range of solutions. These are the four solutions we're putting forward as possibilities. It corresponds to the list Colleen shared earlier, except we're not recommending at this point that we delay the review of other types of applications that are not affordable housing. We would rather focus on other ways to get affordable housing to the process faster that aren't at the expense of those other types of projects. So I can talk through what it would take to move forward next on each of these potential solutions. What we're interested in taking away from tonight is council feedback on which to keep exploring. If there's certain things that seem off the table, we'd like to hear that now. But if there's a menu of things to keep exploring, then we could come back in the fall with more detailed recommendations. And I can talk about what the mechanism each of these would look like and what additional analysis we would do. But I know we've been talking a long time, so I can also pause for feedback if we feel like there's, there's a good opportunity to do that.
I need to see the full screen. All right, I saw Michael had his hand up. Jess? Then Adam? There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I real, this is, you know, eye-opening, shall we say. And this late hour, we need to keep our eyes open. But I really liked the work. I like your approach, you know, really looking at the entire process, not just, you know, sort of cherry picking pieces of it. So this is, this is really good work. Thank you. And I think, you know, what struck me as I was listening and looking at this is it seems like maybe there's, maybe not, but sort of maybe a shortcut through this. If we sort of took as a starting point, the, you know, the zoning process for the light industrial zone, which seems to have worked, again, we haven't had huge amounts of experience with it. I think we've only done two or three approvals there. And think about, rather than trying to construct the process from scratch, maybe think about, are there a few things that might need to be added on to that process to make sure that it fits with our goals? You know, for example, you know, there were some things missing. So maybe instead of just the planning commission, some other board, I don't know, I'm, I'm just throwing it. But it seems rather than trying to start from scratch and create a brand-new process, if you took the light industrial zone process and thought about tweaking it, maybe adding a few things here and there. It's, since we've used it, it seems to be meeting some needs. It's a whole bunch shorter. You know, it seems like that, you know, when I looked at that, it felt to me like that gets us two-thirds or three-quarters of the way where we need to be rather than starting from scratch. So I don't know what my colleagues think, but it, to me, it looked like a really great place to start the, you know, rather than go from first principles.
Okay. Sorry, you had Jess, then Adam, then Karen, then Ty?
Yeah, first I just had a question, which was what's kind of the volume of affordable housing applications that you're expecting, you know, in the next, I don't know, six months or, you know, soon?
So we do, oh, go ahead, Corey.
There, there is some information we compiled about target sites that actually came from our affordable housing staff so they can speak in more detail, but they, there is a range of projects for the next five years. A lot of factors going into the exact timing, but potential development of, of multiple hundreds of units over the next five years among those sites.
Yeah, we, we have over 500 units in the, expected in the pipeline over the next five years. And we, to the earlier questions we received on the previous items, can provide you with an updated list of those projects, but in total sum, it's about 500 units.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is just understanding like how many, how many projects do you think will be coming at us at once? Like, or you know, is it going to be a bunch in year three, or are we expecting there to be a lot happening at one time? Or are they kind of spread out over time? I mean, I know we, we can't know all of it, but I'm just wondering in the short term, if we know kind of what the, what the competition is for, for, you know, everybody's time and expertise and skills and, you know, all that compared to other projects, I guess.
So there are about 10 projects anticipated over the next five years. And there are a variety of factors that are going to influence that timing, including funding.
Okay.
We anticipate it this time.
Okay. So 10, but then we could have them all at once hypothetically, or they could be spread out over the five years, right?
Between now and 2024.
Okay, all right. That's just good to know. I mean, I think for me generally, I really, whatever, whatever path we choose, I just want us to not, to just focus on really good outcomes, which of course, like I know that speed factors into that because we take away funding for the actual project the longer we take. So I, I think for me, it's just really important to, to focus on really good outcomes. Like I think the Peach Apartments was a great example, although a small example of like really focusing on a lot of different elements that made it into a really great place. And it, it had a lot of great elements to it, I think, that are some, a little beyond what we often see in, in even market rate projects. So I think, thinking about how we can get some of those elements just kind of baked into the process or expected or on the front end, talking about, you know, what can we just let folks know is definitely a must so that they don't have to go through the uncertainty and the long process. I think that would be one thing. I think the other thing for me is the concept plan. I know it's, it's kind of tricky. Well, I guess it sounds like people, some- Well, I guess it sounds like people sometimes don't understand what it's even for, which is news to me, but, but interesting to know. I guess to me, the concept plan is like what sets the tone for where that project goes. And so maybe figuring out a way to get more clarity for us and the developers on what would be the most helpful things as part of that process. I think as we've begun to focus more on the big picture and not on bike racks, I think we've gotten to a better place, but really like figuring out even a better way to do that. I've also heard from some advisory board members, they've suggested that some changes to the application could help, so I, but I don't know what those are. So maybe asking, you know, particularly the quasi judicial board members, if there are things they could suggest that, you know, or, you know, develop, development community too. But I think generally, you know, figuring out that good balance, and that's where I would rely on you all's expertise of how do we get to really good outcomes? And what combination of these three legs kind of gets us there? And not relying on one leg so much that we, that we, you know, get either not really great projects, or it just is so slow or whatever, so that, you know, that's kind of my interest. I don't know if that's really answering your questions, or if that's helpful, but I just feel like I don't, I don't know enough yet about what the pros and cons would be of kind of, you know, what mix is the best, but it seems like you have some good options.
Okay.
Michael.
Karen, then Ty? I get that messed up, sorry. I got distracted. Go ahead, Karen, and then we'll get, everyone's got a chance to talk.
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much. This is a great analysis of of the issues and challenges, and I appreciate that you really checked in with the various stakeholders and got what seems like really useful feedback. I definitely like Michael's idea about starting with the light industrial process. I think that one of the questions I have is, so the focus is speeding up the process, of course, but I'm also wondering for, and I think we've so far focused on 100% affordable housing projects that we know are coming, they're, you know, pretty familiar to us, but did you look at all, or this may be kind of a next step down the road about whether changes in our process could incentivize getting more affordable housing? Looking at talking to market rate developers who, you know, now volunteer 15%, but maybe with the right process incentives would go up to, you know, 30 or 40 in order to, you know, have benefits that make it more predictable, more, you know, more reliable, quicker. Has that been part of the discussion at all so far?
It has. We did talk with some developers to do more of a market rate, or who have been doing projects that meet in some portion of affordable, more closely tied with inclusionary zoning. Honestly, when we asked the question, would a faster process incentivize you to do more affordable housing? The answer was, no, I mean, not, not like a jump to 25%, 30% or something that would be really meaningful. They recognize that the amount wouldn't be meaningful, you know, to the town if we're talking about percentages. And we did want to have that conversation because we wanted to open opportunity for maybe developers to be more creative and get involved in the process, even if they aren't doing affordable housing, but the solutions we have so far are really tailored more toward our affordable housing providers who are in that space and responding most to their needs.
Okay, thanks. And I'd love for that to be maybe a future chapter of this, of this effort. But getting back to what you've presented, I really like the way you're talking about it, and, you know, I think that there is a lot of repetition and redundancy in our process, and this applies to all our process, not just for affordable housing. And I really like especially looking at different ways to get community input. I think this ties into some of the conversation we've been having about our advisory boards, and, you know, I certainly, and I think others have been hearing from our advisory boards. They're frustrated, they don't really understand their role, they don't understand what happens with their feedback. Developers are frustrated because they try to meet, they think they're supposed to do what the advisor boards tell them, and then they get to counsel and it's what we say, not what they say. And so they're like, but wait, I thought it was done. And then we ask for a whole nother set of things. And so it is, it's unpredictable, it's expensive, and it sets us up in this very antagonistic relationship, instead of being able to work together to get the best community benefits we can. I also am just, have always been kind of troubled by this idea of, you know, that the role of certain groups is to kind of protect our community values. You know, whose values are those? Who gets to define those? You know, it's, it's kind of a small group, really, if we rely on our boards, or. So I really like ways to get more, more input from different, you know, different voices. And I think things like surveys and, you know, I've seen, you know, different things that towns do on, have websites that residents can go to and provide input and ask questions, and, you know, all those different, you know, through text. They're having a lot of different ways for more people to give input, I think, is a more equitable process and more efficient. And, and less, probably less frustrating all around. And it centers the role of the council, which is to, you know, make those decisions and makes it clear that we are the deciders. I, I'd like the idea of, you know, skipping the concept plan for affordable housing. And what else? And yeah, I think we just, I appreciate, and I think it's so important that we are all really cognizant of how much money our process costs, and that that money is always going to get passed along to residents. So we really need to think about it differently, about whose money we're spending when we, when we draw out these processes. And that I certainly would rather have that go into more affordable units, better design, than just a lengthy, complicated process that's full of risk. So, yeah, I like fewer steps. I like consolidated, fewer, you know, I like maybe just planning commission, and then a different way for the community to provide input. And I don't know exactly what, less application detail, you guys know that, but I'm all for it. Yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate this.
I think I have Ty then Adam.
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation and all your work on this very important initiative. I think going off of what Michael was saying, starting with that light industrial conditional zoning process.
Can you be a little louder? You're a little hard to hear.
Hello, hello? Is that, is that better?
Yeah.
Turn this up maybe. Yeah, so starting with the light industrial conditional zoning process as a starting point. I think you mentioned that Durham and Raleigh do a pretty similar, if not the, the same kind of process for their affordable housing developments, and, you know, the sky hasn't fallen, or there haven't been any disasters over there, so I think that bodes well for us. I agree with Karen about the advisory boards and how historically and to date, that's, you know, the demographics skew a certain way. We've, we all know how hard it is for us to get diverse candidates on the advisory boards, so I'm really appreciative of the efforts to expand the ways in which we do get community input and using, you know, new technology and things like that, always for that. And I think the costs are real. I think I recently saw a post from one of our planning commission members, and they had an interview with a developer that said it was like 10x more expensive to develop in Chapel Hill than it was to do the same exact development in Raleigh or Durham. And that is, I mean, like Karen was saying, that cost gets directly passed on to renters and homeowners in our community. And especially with the current construction budgets, the way it's going, you know, costs are going up exponentially every week, so adding two months to a process is quite a chunk of change. I think I would want to see more detail about the criteria for what projects would qualify for this expedited review. I know we have a variety of affordable housing developers that serve a variety of income levels. So some more detail on that would be helpful. And then I think the last thing was just making sure that all the projects going through the expedited review see similar outcomes in terms of the expeditedness of the review, if that makes sense. I know, you know, we had three or four projects go through that expedited process, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Colleen, but I'm pretty sure Peach was the first one to apply, and they've had the longest process out of all three or four of the projects. So just making sure that, sorry. It's late. Just, yeah, making sure that the expeditedness is equitable across all our providers, I think is also important. And I think that was, yeah, is there any other things y'all needed some input on?
That was good. All right.
Go forth and prosper.
Okay, so hang on, I had, y'all bumped all around again. I had Adam, where'd you go?
Yeah, I'm here.
You totally crossed the screen, sorry. Adam and Paris.
Um, so I, you know, when I was looking at this process, I was kind of thinking about the overall situation and being, you know, just looking at the last few months, we're actually not doing too badly on the, on getting affordable housing projects, you know, approved and moving. I mean, we just approved over a million dollars in bond issue, you know, for the Caraway Village DHIC thing project that's going on. We've approved Trinity Court, we've approved J Street, we've approved Johnson Street, we approved, and we've got Weaver's Grove is moving on construction. We were just touring out there recently, we've got Roverson. So, so we're actually, we have a lot of projects, probably more than any other town in Chapel, in North Carolina, I would, I would guess, of our size. So, you know, when you say, well, we need to, to really accelerate our, you know, our process, I think, right now, and I know that we did do some things with the, you know, the, we tried out some stuff and you're, you know, piloted some of that, some of these things, so maybe these are things we need to look at. But, you know, last time, I was thinking about the other time we tried to accelerate the development process in Chapel Hill, and we got Blue Hill, which a lot of folks are not very excited about, the outcomes there. And, you know, continue to not be very excited about, so I think that's a note of caution. And then I was just looking at your, the, the projects that you're anticipating from, you know, the Bennett Ridge Line land, which was donated for open space, and, and just even, just a few years ago, we were talking to the members of this council, not us, but other members a few years ago, we're talking about how that was such a critically important connection with the trail system in the, you know, up Wilson Creek, and how this was such an important land. We've got, you know, Legion Park, you've got on that list for development. We've got, you know, two parts of the Southern Community Park we're talking about developing. These are all going to be, what, you know, however you feel about them, they are going to be hugely, hugely controversial. And if we're going to come in and then say, well, we're going to, you know, we need to have an accelerated process, I think that's going to cause even more heartburn in our community. So I would just say, you know, just to kind of sound a note of caution here, I think, given the list that we're looking at, our experience in previous years, you know, and the fact that we're actually not doing so badly at the moment in, as far as getting projects moving, would all sound to me a little bit of a note of caution. That's my feedback.
Okay, I have Paris. Followed by Amy, and then Camille.
Um, I'm really so happy to see this come before council. And I mean, no matter what development we get coming before us, it causes heartburn for some community members regardless. I mean, I'm just being honest. And I think, you know, our LUMO was written to deter development, and our process is clearly the cherry on top of that. And so I'm just really happy to see that we are thinking about our affordable housing community stakeholders and the amount of costs that goes into our entitlement process. And so the light industrial review, I'm glad you all presented that. I'm glad it came from you all. It's clearly something that you all have looked at, not having the concept plan. You know, I really, really cringed when I saw, you know, our process being able to go beyond a year. And that's with everything going well. Looking at our advisory boards, you know, I've been in the meetings where developers are there, and if, you know, the meeting runs long and they get, don't get to a developer, it's put off for another month. And so we really have to be cognizant of what we're doing. So light industrial process will help, you know, hopefully drive down the costs with our affordable housing. I'm really shocked that we don't have enough predictability in the process, and so we really need to, I would love some real concrete things there offered to, to us, so we can be thinking about, so we can make sure that things are clear. I do think our advisory boards are an issue when it comes to equity and community input, and would like to see, you know, different ways in which we can engage community around these concepts, because really, I believe this is a really great snapshot of the kind of culture that has been created in our community around how our community has moved forward, the future of our community, how it's been just shaped by those who get heartburn. And then the planning department really would love, Colleen, to get what y'all need in terms of staffing, so you can get the work done as a part of that process, an expedited process. I want you all to be able to be hitting on all cylinders, so as things are coming in, things are speeding up, I don't want to, of course, we don't want speed to take away from quality of review, that's not what our objective here is at all. And I know some people are going to hear that, but that's not what we're talking about. And so just love to hear, Colleen, I know you have a structure that you've seen, you know, presented before us before, like what it's going to take to get those positions and get you all running on all cylinders, so you can be ready to rock and roll. And I agree with the planning commission for our affordable housing to be, you know, where the review goes in terms of like boards or commissions. So those were my comments. Thank you.
Amy, then Camille.
Sorry, it's not letting me unmute there. So, yeah, so first comment is, I'm glad we're finding a way to smooth the path of affordable housing through our review process. I think anybody who's willing to come in and build an all affordable development needs a pretty hefty carrot to do that, so I'm, I'm happy about that. I want to learn from Raleigh and Durham, but I think we can do better than they do. I'm seeing a lot of the stuff that's going up, and they're not really building neighborhoods or communities. I'm just seeing a lot of big housing complexes, and I think we, I think we strive for a better environment than that for our affordable housing. So I think we can, we can learn, but then I want to aspire a little bit more. At one point, on one of the slides, it says that the advisory boards were about community values. For me, while they represent some of that, it's that, that they have the expertise and the time to take a deeper dive into some issues than I can. I do not know anything about stormwater, so when, you know, when somebody who's a storm- Um, I do not know anything about stormwater. So when, you know, when somebody who's a stormwater engineer makes a comment or finds something on a plan that needs to change, that's valuable to me. So I don't know how, um, I agree that I, I've been part of joint advisory board reviews and they're awkward and they just don't work well. It's just, it, it doesn't, we've never found a way to make that work. Um, I can see that, um, the suggestion of having the planning commission do it by themselves, I think that would work because supposedly they draw from, they try to contain all those different expertise from transportation and housing on that one board. I think that could work. Um, I think you could also just have an affordable housing development review and get a volunteer from each of the boards and meet, you know, whatever, and you could do that as well. Uh, planning commission probably would be easier, but, uh, again, I think a, a solution other than the joint advisory board, um, would work. And my experience in advisory boards, we never got a whole lot of public comment. Um, when we were on the planning commission, if we would have two people in the audience for the night, it was that, who wasn't a developer or presenter, it was kind of a big deal. So, um, a few controversial issues, that was different, but, um, I didn't, in my experience at least, that was not the, a great venue for public input. So just, uh, my two cents on that. I think I'm probably okay with a less detailed design during the entitlement process. Um, I think a little more as you were talking about that this would be maybe, uh, you know, if you started with light industrial and then kind of beefed it up, I think, um, you know, just a building envelope is not enough. We certainly need, would need a site plan and stormwater information and all that kind of thing. Um, if we do do that though, I want to make sure how we're handling the final design review. I assume that we wouldn't be going back, um, to the CDC at, you know, during the ZCP process, that wouldn't happen. Um, I don't know whether we could get Brian involved and whether he would be, have kind of the final okay on it. Um, I just would want to make sure that if we're, if we're going to start with, uh, with a more sketchy process that, that we have, we do make sure that we've got somebody doing a very careful design review at some point who, who really is keyed into that kind of thing. Um, you know, one of the things with the light industrial zone, it's kind of sits by itself, its neighbors are all going to be light industrial buildings, you know, it's not going to be near other neighbors. It's not going to be in a very built up area. So it's just, it's just a different creature and they can get by with basically no design review and it's really fine. But I, I don't think that that's going to be the same. You know, we're going to be doing infill, we're going to have neighbors, we're going to have to make sure that this all works. Um, yes, I agree if more resources for the planning department would help, I think that would be great. Um, you know, extending timelines for other projects is hard because it just, that makes those projects more expensive. So, you know, I, I think if we can do it with staffing, that would be better. If we keep a concept plan, I agree, maybe it was, I can't remember who said it, but the council has gotten better at staying high level on concept plans. Um, so it might be possible, if you're not running concept plans through the boards, that you could have a council concept plan and we, you know, we're kind of trained to stay pretty high level on that. Because like sometimes we do see projects that just are kind of no goes from the beginning. And I think it's helpful before anybody's really made a lot of investment for them to, if council is really feeling negative. Now, I, I have a hard time imagining what a hundred percent affordable development would look like that we weren't happy about. But, you know, I think that just having some kind of, um, thumbs up or down from council would, would be useful at that stage. Uh, I think that's it. But thank you for your efforts. I'm, you know, was really encouraged. I know the Peach apartments took a little bit longer to get through the process, but it was a lovely project. Really, you know, was really good. So the quality is still staying there, which is, as somebody else said, that's, that's the thing we want to make sure is still there. So thank you.
Okay, Camille?
Thanks. All right. First of all, thank you all for, um, looking at how we did with the joint advisory groups and then how can we do better? And I agree that joint advisory meeting was long and I did not stay with you the entire time. I had the privilege of being able to check out and come back in. Um, and I really appreciate the staff and the volunteers who stayed with it, um, for those. Um, how can we do this shorter? How can we make it less expensive to provide affordable housing is what we're trying to get at? That is, is, um, there is quality and, uh, we can increase the likelihood of quality if we decrease the amount of hoops that we have them to jump through, essentially is what I'm hearing, uh, and what I've experienced. Because I've worked with one of our, with one of our partners and I know how challenging it is to partner with this town. As Adam said, we're doing great. No, we're not. We're doing well, but we need to do better. We need to do a lot better. So, um, it is going to cause heartburn anytime we present something that is going to change. It causes heartburn. People struggle with it. Um, excuse me. How can we, and I've just lost track of my notes here, but, um, I like the idea that Michael presented of can we start with the light industrial? Now, we don't want to go that bare bones, but we can start there and then add on what makes sense. Um, I don't want to give, continue to give people the false, um, leads that, um, that I sometimes hear about the concept plan. And then what I also have witnessed with, um, with, when they go through the advisory boards and the advisory board members throw out a great idea that they have. I'm capable of throwing those out. Um, and they take it to heart, the developers take it to heart and then they get to us and we're like, what? Um, and that's what, that's, the developers are saying, that's what we heard. So, A, what I'm trying to get at, I'm sorry, I'm rambling here, is I support streamlining. It makes sense. There's, um, we need, I think we can be more efficient. That means that we need to articulate. That's essentially what we're trying to do is articulate what do we want? And I think we need to have the courage to say what we want. I don't think we've gotten there yet. Um, and thank you, Raleigh Durham. They have flicked at us to see how we've been doing it. I've gotten calls when I was with community hunters, how do you all do it? So they have learned from us, um, the different ways that we do affordable housing here, built on that and created their own. I think it makes sense to see what they're doing. How can we incorporate it? I think this is a really good start. Um, I appreciate the caution that I'm hearing from you all, from the staff, as well as my peers about we can't go too much, but I think that we can streamline it. And I am concerned about the advisory boards. Um, though I have to say, I really enjoy being, uh, the liaison for the planning commission. They work really hard to stay in their lane and they remind each other, this is what we're deciding. I am not hearing that from all the other advisory boards. They tend to veer way out of their lanes. So, um, and the planning commission, yes. Um, Amy, my short time with them, I agree with you that they do, what I, um, have taken away is that they do have representatives who are there and they work really hard to convey what they believe, uh, matters to those. So I think it does make sense to use the planning commission. Um, they are a high functioning group. And that is it. Thank you so much. I really like this attempt.
Hey, I'll throw in my comments and then we can see where we go from there. Um, thank you too. We do need to streamline it. It does affect how many units. It does affect, um, the efficiency of our housing partner, affordable housing partners too. I do see it in different buckets though. I see this, I was really kind of taken aback that we had to spend, or they had to spend so much time on two double, two duplexes, the north side. Maybe we have a cutoff somewhere where it's ten units or less. You don't have to go through all that. You just go to planning commission. You just, I, I mean, I loved the idea, by the way, of having Brian Peterson be the sign off authority on the design because he catches things that a lot of us, and he's, he is a professional, um, instead of going to all the different boards. We have a cutoff for stormwater right now of more than five acres. I think we have to keep that because we are having to deal with climate change and stormwater issues and a bigger complex is going to need to figure that out before they move forward and it's baked in, right? You, you have to figure out where that stormwater facility is going on the property before you can move forward. But doesn't need to go through all the other boards. Um, we have really good perceptions here on council too about energy efficiency, about transportation, about parks and rec, about all those kinds of things. Um, I think we can cover some of the other things. I like the planning boards' experience. We let them have site plan review, everything twenty thousand square feet or less. Maybe find us a square footage that works in that dimension as well, um, or number of units or whatever. I'm, I'm, didn't look completely at the list. I don't know if everything that's going to come before you is going to be more than thirty units or less than five. I mean, i- it's just so different and to put somebody through the entire year program for two duplexes, I mean, I know that it was faster than that, but it just doesn't seem like the right way to go about it. So, um, we're all asking you to find us a way to help expedite, to make your lives easier as well, to get these programs for affordable housing moving, um, quicker through the system. Um, yet I'm not willing to give up. I, I, I agree. I, I, one of the ones that spearheaded the light industrial, I think that kind of model could have some benefits if we had design guidelines, if we had some of those things already into effect, but we don't have all those yet. Um, I want our affordable housing to be nice looking housing as well and fit into neighborhoods and places people are proud to be part of. So I do think we have to have a Brian Peterson or someone review it with that eye as well, just to make sure, um, it's quality work, um, which it can be if they don't spend so much money on the entitlement process. So we'll get that. I know we have a lot of infill projects, a lot of the parcels that are left are infill. Um, they're, or topography challenged or those kinds of things. So I do think it's going to require planning commission, somebody to take a look at that as well. So I don't want to, the group advisory board thing didn't work out like we'd hoped. I think the random comments we get from people too make it really hard on whoever the applicant is to understand whether that's a majority opinion, council opinion, or just a random comment. So, um, I think we can do better than that. So. Have you heard enough from us? We kind of give you, gave you a mishmash of all four proposals to combine into something.
Yes, and that, that's great. Um, we wanted to, uh, have that first check in around those solutions. So it, it does sound like we're hearing that keep moving forward with exploring all of them. Um, and there is more information on them in the packet about, um, what we want to continue analyzing. Uh, we will also consider the feedback we've heard here tonight in terms of, uh, more things to analyze as we develop these solutions. Um, and I'll just note our next steps are to, to develop the solutions, to do some policy drafting over the summer and have it ready for, um, community and stakeholder review in late summer, early fall. Um, we may be going through something like a text amendment process, it sounds like, given the interest um, in adapting the light industrial district. So that would be a, a process, um, going through uh, public community, playing commission and then council hearing, uh, which we'd be prepared to do in the fall.
Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you. Thank you for bearing with us this evening. Y'all stuck it out here, champions here for a long meeting. We, um, reminder that, um, we have a meeting on Monday evening. Well, sorry, we have the DEQ. I am, who's got their hands up? Paris, did you have something to share? Get your hand up. Sorry, okay.
No, no, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry, we don't, we've run out, we're way over time. We don't have time for public comment tonight, but you're welcome to send us an email or give us a phone call. We do appreciate that, but we are finished for this evening. Um, Mr. Manager, do you have anything else for us? All right, then officially call this work session adjourned. Thank you.